Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Retreat for this Saturday, October 15, 2022. We have just one item for discussion today, and that is to review the 2023-24 state legislative agenda and policy manual, along with our federal legislative agenda and our Pierce County policy manual. So to start us off, we have Michael Vargas, our assistant to the city manager, who will introduce our governmental affairs consultants, Brianna Murray and Shelley Helder, and take it from there.
Good morning, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and welcome to the councilal retreat to review the city's legislative priorities. So yeah, we'll have three presentations today. First off, we'll start with our state governmental affairs consultant team, Ms. Shelley Helder and Ms. Brianna Murray of Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Then we will have Mr. Jake Johnston of the Johnston Group to go over the federal legislative priorities, and I will close out with the Pierce County legislative priorities. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Ms. Shelley Helder and Ms. Brianna Murray. Thanks.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here this morning to talk with you about the state legislative agenda and joined by Shelley Helder. As always, it's a pleasure. I, before I dive in, I want to just do a bit of a time check. I have a hard stop at 10:15 with another work-related event today. And so I'm going to start off our presentation, but then I am going to turn it over to Shelley in case your conversation lasts longer than that. My hope is that we can cover the state legislative agenda within that timeframe. That's a healthy amount of time. So I'm going to start us off with just providing you with a little bit of context on what to expect for the upcoming 2023 legislative session. And in providing that context, I'm going to start with an event that is really just around the corner, and that is this November's elections. As I think you all may be aware, legislators are currently seeking reelection or election to new redistricted boundaries. Lakewood continues to be in the 28th and 29th legislative districts. Statewide, there are over 25 open seats because legislators chose not to run for reelection or chose to run for the Senate when they were House members. So we are looking at a significant number of new state-elected officials regardless of any shift in party. And of course, we're seeing one of those positions in the 29th with the retirement of Representative Steve Kirby being open and two new candidates running for that seat. In addition to all of the open seats, all House seats and approximately half the Senate seats are up for reelection, and there are some significant challenges this next, this campaign cycle. The outcome of the November elections will be formative in terms of determining who will have the majority of the state House of Representatives and the state Senate. Based on the August primary results, it suggests that Democrats will retain the majority in both chambers, but will likely lose a couple seats. And so continue to maintain the majority, but not quite at the same numbers as we saw last biennium. After the November elections, leadership and committee chairs will be identified by each caucus, so we'll see a reorganization of who is serving on what committees, even what the committees are. The, the majority party will lead that process in making the committee structure and identifying the number of legislators on each committee, and then the minority caucuses will follow in identifying which members will serve on which committees. That will all happen by early December. We'll see committee assembly days occur at the end of November and early December where legislators are going to start holding work sessions and talking about bills for this upcoming legislative session. And on December 1st, bills can begin being prefiled for consideration for the 2023 session. In other words, a lot of the state legislative work kicks into high gear here very quickly. The legislative session will start on January 9th. As a reminder, the legislature operates on a two-year biennial cycle, with the first year of that cycle being a long legislative session that's 105 consecutive days, and this year that will start on January 9th. In addition to it being a long legislative session, it's a budget year, which means they will use those 105 days to develop new biennial budgets. The state has three budgets, an operating budget, a capital budget, and a transportation budget. As a reminder, the operating budget funds all of the state agency operations, including funding the K through 12 education system and the higher education system. The capital budget is funded with bonds issued against a percentage of the operating budget, and it funds bricks and mortar construction that is not transportation-related throughout the state, including construction of buildings needed for operation of state agencies. And then the final budget is the transportation budget, which in the past has been primarily funded with fuel tax revenues. With the 2022 Move Ahead Washington package, we see a new revenue stream coming into that budget called the Climate Commitment Act revenues that is revenue coming from the newly enacted cap and invest or cap and trade system. We're, I'm anticipating that in all three of those budgets, we're not going to be looking at budget cuts this next biennium. There's healthy revenues anticipated for each of those budgets. You may have seen in the media that the revenue, the latest revenue forecast was slightly lower, and a clarification on that that isn't always clear in the media. It's lower than the previous revenue forecast, not necessarily lower than the last enacted budget. I will say that the last round of budget appropriations included an allocation of a significant amount of one-time federal funds that was made available for COVID relief. And so we will not see those federal funds be as readily available. So I don't, I don't anticipate budget cuts, but I do expect it will be a smaller budget dollar-wise because there won't be that federal, federal funds to spend. But on the whole, the legislature did a good job of putting those federal funds into one-time investments and not ongoing investments that would create a shortfall. In the transportation budget, just to provide a little bit more detail on what we're expecting, particularly in relation to the Move Ahead Washington package. The Move Ahead Washington package that was adopted in 2022 included the structure for transportation funding moving forward and included a series of project lists. That package is envisioned to fund those projects over the next 16 years. However, they didn't, in, in the 2022 action delineate what projects would receive what funding over that 20, or over that 16-year time period. So one of the tasks before this legislature is refining that Move Ahead Washington proposal and determining what projects receive funding in what years. And based on what we've learned from transportation leadership, we're not expecting them to plan out the full 16-year package, but to maybe take it in bite-sized chunks of like first phase, second phase, third phase. In addition to developing those biennial budgets, there will be several hundred policy bills introduced. And rather than trying to kind of go through all the hot topics, many of those are covered within the subject areas in the proposed legislative agenda and policy document before you, so we can provide legislative context or political context as we go through our legislative documents and talk about each of those policy issues. But I'm anticipating a fairly robust policy discussion and continuation of a lot of bills under consideration in this session. The legislature will be, is anticipated to be meeting in person. That decision doesn't formally get made until, until after the November election, when the majority party is determined, and the majority party largely drives the decision around operating and protocols with input from the minority party. I do expect there will be a difference between pre-pandemic in-person legislative sessions and post-pandemic in-person sessions. I don't see the ability to remotely testify going away. I don't see meetings needing to all be exclusively in person. I expect legislators will continue to dedicate a portion of their calendar to virtual connection. And I anticipate some legislators, particularly those further away from Olympia, will use technology to try and be more physically present within their district throughout the legislative session. All of that is, remains unclear at this point, and I would also just note, in case you're anticipating coming to Olympia, I also expect a parking crunch for, for the campus because the Irv Newhouse building is going to be demolished and under construction this session, and the Senate Republican members that traditionally are within that building will be in portables on a parking lot. So all of the parking from that parking lot will be displaced, creating a greater parking crunch than we usually see. Sure, you got a parking question? I, yeah, so the parking tickets are about 20, I think it's like either 15 or $25, and the second one is 50.
My state agency just happens to be building all of the construction happening on campus, and we also manage parking. And the, the anticipation is, there are actually tons of parking. It's all underground, and you have to walk a little bit further. And so people complain about, oh my gosh, there's no parking, but there actually is. There's giant, giant parking garages underground. And so that the idea is that we're working on the signage. And so first you have to find the, the parking, but there, there is parking. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
So when you guys want to come down, you can all load on a bus. I think with that context and background, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to begin going through the proposed agenda and policy document before you, and I'll chime in and help answer questions as we go along.
Okay. Well, to start, I'm just going to start with a brief overview. Of course, Lakewood's legislative program is comprised of two documents for state engagement, and both of these sets of documents are developed with the mindset that the legislature operates in a two-year cycle. So these documents are for the 2023 and 2024 session, and typically whatever is accomplished in the first year of the biennium, we come back and make updates in preparation for the second year. The legislative agenda is the document that lists the top three to four priorities for the city for the biennium. And then the policy manual is the document that is more extensive and lists various positions the city holds on state-level policies. In recent years, we've had a lot of success in our legislative program, particularly on securing capital budget requests. I think every capital budget request the city has made in the last several biennia has been secured. And from our perspective, one of the reasons for that is because we are making reasonable requests, and we're making them frequently, and we're maintaining relationships with our legislators, and those requests are being made as match to the hard work that city, city is already doing to pursue other grants. And so you'll see that that's reflected in this legislative agenda continuing that structure of success. So starting at the top of the legislative agenda, the first proposed priority is a capital budget request in the 28th legislative district. And this is a request being made in partnership with the Nisqually Indian Tribe to have enhancements or improvements at Fort Stillicum Park. The improvements would be educational signage and art features, highlighting the history of Nisqually Indian Tribe in this area, an introduction to the Nisqually people and their language, as well as the, the legacy that Chief Leshai has, has provided to this region. The total cost of the project is $300,000. The request of the state is $250,000, so the request is a sizable portion of the total project cost, and that remaining difference, that 50,000, is anticipated to be covered by the city. So that is the first item. The next is a capital budget request in the 29th legislative district, and this is also a request that's being done in partnership with a local organization, the Living Access Support Alliance. Of course, they're a nonprofit that provides housing and transitional housing services, as well as case management to, to ultimately prevent homelessness. They are planning to construct roughly 25 affordable low and lower-income units on their property in Lakewood, and they are in the fundraising phase. Pierce County has already committed 3.5 million to the project, and so the city, on behalf of LASSA, would be making a request to the legislature for $500,000. And I think you all know, as you're going through your budget deliberations, the amount that the city would be considering contributing towards the project is still being identified. The next priority is an operating budget request, and this is a request for the continuation of the Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program. This is a budget request that the city makes at the beginning of every biennium, and that's because this program is not in state law, it's in the budget. We have attempted to put it in state law and have decided that our best, our, our best chances of ongoing success are to have it in each biennial budget. The, the program provides consistency in response to criminal cases, case management, and increased safety for the staff and patients at Western State. In late 2021, the services provided through this program were paused due to a staffing shortage with the Lakewood Police Department. The services were partially reinstated in early 2022 and are now fully up and running. We, in the last several months, have been working with Western State Hospital and DSHS to discuss potential increase to the funding for that program. The outcome of that work will be known in December when the governor releases his proposed, proposed operating budget. And recognizing that we have other ambitious items on the legislative, city's legislative agenda, and having worked to increase this funding and continue this funding in years past, we do recommend following the agency's guidance on whether or not that increase should be included and whether or not there's resources to allocate, additional resources to allocate to the program. Our efforts will be focused on maintaining the existing level, and our energy that would otherwise go towards increasing that funding will go to the other items on the city's legislative agenda. The final item on the legislative agenda is a policy request, and to just start this, I want to provide a little bit of context. There is a memo in the packet for this work that describes the recent history of adult family home bills that have been introduced, and I guess not just adult family home, but any, any legislation related to the release of individuals into residential care facilities, of which often they are adult family homes. In the last eight years, there have been 19 bills introduced. Two of them have passed the legislature. I would say the vast majority of these bills have been sponsored by 28th District members, various individuals that have held that, held those offices over the years. I, I want to highlight that because the two bills that were successful in passing in, they, they touched on the topic of fair share, and they, they addressed the issue from coming at it from a fair share lens. And so that is what informs our recommendation for the city this morning. Additional context is that the city worked with the 28th District legislators in this last session to secure $250,000 towards a report that is currently being generated to identify the availability and geographic location of residential facilities for individuals being released from state, from a state facility. So someone being released from Western State, what are the options that, that DSH has, DSH, DSHS has in where that individual could be placed? That report is due to the legislature on December 1st, and we just met with the team that's developing the report. It sounds like they are on track to meet that deadline, which is encouraging to hear. And we are hopeful that, that, that is, and that was requested and anticipated to be the first step in a multi-step process to ensure that there is, there is equitable distribution of individuals when the state is considering where to place someone. So with, with all that context, what you see in, on the city's proposed legislative agenda is a kind of broad statement about the steps that the city can support in increasing fair share policies, as well as leaving a little bit of flexibility for us to react to the outcome of that December report. The specific legislative requests that I think we would want to work with our 28th District legislators on are clarifying that SVPs released from state facilities, that, that no matter what facility they're being released from, that fair share needs to apply. There are laws that, recent law passed clarified that SVP released from the Secure Community or SCC, Secure Commitment Center, yeah, that those individuals have to be subject to fair share, but that law did not address individuals being released from state hospitals. And so that is still, depending on how you see it, a gap in the law and something that we can specifically target. So that I don't talk so much, I think I will pause there and see if there are any questions about any of the proposed priorities for the legislative agenda.
Questions? Done?
I have a general question, and it's going to be very partisan outlook. We have more revenues in state than we've ever had. We have a recession by many definitions. We have overspent, and our governor, who's just rated 50th in the country in fiscal responsibility to act on spending. And that's hard to do. Like, given that context and that we can't do anything about those circumstances, it may be our last chance for a big ask because the money that the legislature's been doling out is likely going to dry up. Things are going to change. Given that, should we think about setting our priorities not so much as what we think we need as, from that list, what do we think we can get? Where is this governor and this, where will this governor and this legislature in the next 12 months spend the most freely? And can we take advantage of that?
To pointedly answer your question about where they will likely spend the most amount of money, I think that it's going to be in environmental policies and housing, and the request associated with LASSA definitely dovetails with that priority. I would also note that even during times of recession, the legislature has continued to have a healthy capital budget because the capital budget is funded by a percentage of the operating budget and is dictated over a period of four years. And so even when you have a biennium where you see a reduction in operating budget revenues, it ends up being averaged out over those four years. So unless you have a very long recession, you don't see the same reduction or corresponding reduction in the capital budget. So capital budget revenues tend to, tend to continue to be robust through the recession and tend to be the tool that the legislature uses to help spur investment.
So do you anticipate the program, programmatic allocations to be particularly restrictive or broader so that you could maybe do something more innovative? I just came back from San Francisco. You know, they double down, they spend a billion dollars a year, and it's worse.
On housing specifically?
On, on addressing homelessness. I mean, it's, it's, it's like George Washington's doctors. He's, he's sick, we're going to bleed him, it didn't work, let's bleed him some more, see if that works.
I think the legislature is going to have a robust debate about the appropriate way of addressing housing policy and those funding accounts. For example, the Housing Trust Fund is a longstanding traditional account, and I know that there are stakeholders who are pushing for a portion of that account or the creation of a new account to be dedicated to land banking. Land banking so that key lots can be acquired for the purpose of afford, affordable housing. There's going to be a robust discussion on the pros and cons of that policy. So I think that, you know, to your question, which is, are they going to do something different around housing? I, I would expect so, and that there will be changes in a, in a fairly robust policy dialogue.
Thanks. Mr. Brann center.
On the matter of strategy, and the strategy that we have always had is that we have highlighted three to five priorities every year to really focus our legislative efforts and particularly our legislative representatives on them. And then we use those to sort of, as the barometer as to how well we did at the end of the year to be able to go and do that. But, but I'm, this, this year, we've continually, just historically used one of those spaces for the Western State Hospital Community Policing Program. That, we've always sort of gotten the baseline of dollars, sometimes some more, we, 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 other aspects to strengthen that or expand it to include Eastern State Hospital and to get some, have generally been unsuccessful. And if I understood that there is an anticipation that the agency is looking to have the funding that we're willing to invest effort into sustaining rather than increasing, expecting it to be in the governor's proposed budget, or at least DSHS is going to do that. So I'm, I'm thinking, and that, and that, and if it is, and it's in there without an increase that would be desirable, that should it really take up one of those top four spaces? Should we come up with another priority that is, that, that we would want to highlight to do that and, and drop this down into the policy manual that we want to continue the program, that we want the, 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 the funding to be continued, and that there'd be some consideration for inflation to do that, but that we take the priority messaging and drop that off and look at something else that we really want to try to get the legislature to move on. And I don't know, and, and, and it could be in the area of housing, but it could be in this area of, of, of public safety, which in both the 28th and 29th district portions of our city are significant topics of discussion, significant things where they would like to do. And quite often, our message to residents is that some of the problems you want us to fix need action at the state level. But, and I, and I would think that if we could add our, our voice around what we would like to see adjusted in terms of, of, of public legislation that is influencing public safety, elevating that up into being one of our priorities would match, I think, the priorities of our community to be able to go and do that while we're sort of, and, and, and replacing the Western State Hospital. Long-term, the Western State Hospital program, two years from now, looks to get adjusted when they try to figure what does the program need to look like based on the new master plan where there's a different mix of residents and, and things that are there. You know, and that would be, you know, you know, my suggestion to use that, one of those top spaces for that rather than the same old placeholder, which is just my description of it. And, and I think that, that, that there are, I think that would put our priorities in line with some of the priorities that, that, that other regional communities will. I think that would put our priorities in line with some of the priorities that 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 other regional communities will.
Yeah, I don't disagree, you know, seems like the public safety piece crosses the twenty eighth and twenty ninth nicely, and it is one we hear most about with regard to addressing those policy priorities.
My recommendation would be to keep the Western State Hospital request on your top priorities. Because if you are not advocating for it, there is not another stakeholder advocating for it. And we have seen sessions where there's been budget proposals where it's been removed. That being said, um, Councilmember Brandstetter, you indicated that we identify three to five top priorities and there are four on this list. And so I I do think if council wished to add public safety as a priority on the agenda, that there is space and opportunity to do that while keeping Western State Hospital requests there.
True.
I would just add, if the council has an interest in elevating public safety to the to the front sheet here, two items to consider, which we are working in partnership, not just with Association of Washington Cities, but also um, other cities and towns, is the issue of addressing the Blake decision and vehicular pursuits, which are actually two of the top five priorities of AWC. And they are proposed in your policy manual. So if um, those are items, if public safety is something that you you want to elevate, my recommendation would be that you consider either both or one of those to be to be moved here. And having five or six as key priorities, that's fine. I mean, it can be one, two, it could be seven. Um, and as as Shelley pointed out earlier, this is a biennial approach as well. So um, it doesn't all have to get done and you plant the seed, you water it and we'll see what happens. Um, I would also just like to make a comment regarding the future of Western State Hospital. You know, the Community Partnering Program, um, it it'll be more like maybe five or six or even seven years down the road before there's any real impact to the changes of the current uses that are there to what the future uses are. Because it's gonna take, um, it's gonna take like a year, year and a half just to demolish what they're what they have out there. And then as they build the new facilities, that's another two to three years. And then as they bring them online, so you're really looking at five to six, maybe even seven years before there's any kind of major change, never mind wholesale change down on that campus. So just wanna try and manage expectations there.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Coughfield, and and to you, Brianna, on the the concept that if if we're not making the request, who would? And I guess my thought is, why wouldn't DSHS be making the request? Because if they have the calls for service and we don't respond, who will?
Sure, so maybe to be a little bit more pointed, I think DSHS will recommend that it go in the governor's proposed budget. If through the legislative process, there is a House or Senate budget proposal that removes the funding that DSHS recommends, I don't anticipate DSHS prioritizing advocating for it to be included back in. That is something that would likely only happen if the city engaged.
Got it. So worst case scenario though, let's just run it to the nth degree. Let's say the funding isn't there and we say we can't, we can't respond.
Correct, so worst case scenario would be that uh, through the end of the legislative budget process, the funding is not there and then the program ends.
And what happens to the calls for service?
So calls for service from that institution would be handled just like any other property owner, whether it's commercial, residential, nonprofit, that would get in the queue and cell phone nine one one would prioritize accordingly. And LPD and or other public safety agencies would respond accordingly.
Got it. So it wouldn't necessarily get any the heightened level that is provided by the funding source that we now receive.
I would say that without this program, if that was to happen, then Western State Hospital, as it relates to the safety of both the patients and in particular the staff, um, it would get real ugly real quick.
And I agree with you, and that's why I kinda raised the point, you know, it's it's certainly a legislative priority for us, but it really should be for them as well. And so I look forward to seeing it in the governor's budget. Because I don't disagree with Mr. Brandstetter that perhaps should be an ongoing part of our uh, policy manual, but not necessarily our ongoing heightened priority objective, it should be theirs as well. So I also wanna talk a little bit, a comment that Mr. Anderson raised about the capital budget being significant this biennium. I know it's not on the list here and maybe uh, for good reason. But I throw it out for seed planting, as you know, you've probably heard about the H Barn project. The H Barn project for Silicon Park is a a uh, partnership between Partners for Parks, a five oh one C three, uh, as well as the city. Uh, there has been some significant engagement on that project. The city anticipates uh, assisting after the private fundraising piece is in place with some lodging tax monies. Uh, from conversations with Mayor Murray at Silicon, he was interested in doing a joint uh, request to the legislature this year because it is a a capital budget year. And if not now, it's not gonna be until twenty five, twenty six, right, or later? So if if there are significant monies to be had, I guess I look at this listing and I think we we're aiming small. Because the the budget requests to me are pretty modest, uh, which is fine, because they're more likely than to be accommodated, I assume. But I think it's pretty modest and I I don't know what the thought is here, but I'm planting the seed because if not this year or this biennium, it needs to be in the next. And my question to you is, if not now, does it make sense then, given the fact that we are entering into a different era? Larger funding this biennium than there may be down the road, thoughts?
It's raised the H Barn mayor, um, you noted the the, based on the current plan and proposal by the folks who are spearheading that. Um, the best opportunity for both the City of Lakewood and the town of Silicon, and I've had conversations with him as well, would be um, in two two years from now. Um, however, and and the reason being too is because there's a timeline in terms of when these monies can be spent. So if we were to request funding this cycle and we got it, um, we have, in terms of how those monies can be spent, we would be asking for continuation for a year, two, three, even four years. And quite frankly, that would then jeopardize future capital budget requests because the state legislature would come back and say, well, you haven't spent what we've given you.
That's only if we drag our heels on the project.
Again, we're not direct, we're not, Mayor, we're not driving that project. We're waiting for, you know, the proponents to come forward with their three plus million dollar fundraising. And um, so however, if they do meet, if they beat their expectations, um, certainly coming forward as part of the next, you know, the the short session next year in requesting funds. And actually, one of the benefits of partnering with Silicon is that gives us extra oomph to do that. So um, so again, if the folks who are spearheading the H Barn proposal have something, you know, if they have their three million dollars, you know, raised here in the near future, requesting funds this time next year could certainly be a um, be a um, but you know, viable viable option. So just.
I am planting the seeds so they know that it's on the the horizon.
Yeah, I would just add that particularly for capital budget requests, they are most successful when the other funding has been secured. So for the H Barn, um, it is, you know, definitely on the horizon for the city. And when additional funding is secured, that is an appropriate time.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, you had a comment?
Yeah, what she said, last money is the money you can get, and I've had some experience with rolling and then turning back uh, my my day job. The um, I I would uh, join in the suggestion that we include public safety as a priority. It it's the thing, one of the things that our residents are most concerned about right now. It having it on the list sends a message that we're concerned both to the legislature and and the people of Lakewood. And I expect the legislature will do something. It would focus that we wanna be involved in the discussion of where in the continuum that lands. You know, everybody's gonna declare victory after next legislative session that they, they did something about it. Uh, but whether they really did something about it is going to be the question. The devil's in the details, so I'd like that heightened.
Agreed. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, I I I think, you know, the particularly the 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 public safety piece is while this is a message to legislators, having it as a priority is also a message to the community and a message to our first responders that 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 that's that serve us well to be able to go and do that, that 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 we're responsive to that. And I guess I would just clarify that my response that 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 maybe in two years, there's gonna need to look at in terms of the our policing program with Western State Hospital. Actually, the city manager talks about the 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 impact on residents and things is six to eight years away. But that uh, in a in a master plan that is going to involve major construction, we have found that construction sites are magnets for criminal activity and require response, response efforts and prevention efforts to be able to go and do that and three to four years from now, when 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 that is kicked off and there's a lot of that going on on Western State Hospital, you know, that will impact our need to be able to respond and serve what what will be an emerging public safety need for them uh, beyond what the program currently uh, deals with and envisions. And I would, guess I would just comment on on one last item, and that is on the a minor point on our our discussion regarding the geographic equity from state solutions. And we uh, you know, are um, I guess in in our summary, we speak to uh, it 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 impacting thing and there being an impact on public safety. Um, and I think that somewhere in that safety impact, we should indicate that it's it impacts the safety of staff and residents in the facilities where people go as well as public safety. Um, it just sort of to make that that point of evidence, point evident in the write-up to be able to go and do that because uh, most frequently, it's staff and 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 other residents that have been the victims of problems that are there. Whereas public safety concerns have been prevalent within the community. And I and I and I would also note that in the past two years, this problem has potentially spreading from the twenty eighth into the twenty ninth district. As we have seen the adult family home folks seek to expand to be able to um, utilize structures that are in the air corridors to 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 do those and in fact are um, and we're and we're getting ready to have a a grand opening of our first uh, E E M E T F uh, facility, and it's gonna be located in the in the in the twenty ninth. You know, and and that's, while that seems like it's moving from the twenty ninth to something, it's in the twenty ninth, that that that's not the geographic dispersion we were we were really hoping for, that to have it included. Get more things in the twenty ninth as well as in the twenty eighth to be able to go and do that. Um, and um, so that's that's just kind of my thought on that. I I think it 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 remains uh, and and any a a area of concern and that in the in the twenty ninth, it'll become more of a concern when they suddenly see a proliferation of adult family homes, should that occur.
Mr. Anderson.
Just, I just wanna know if if you've heard about this being an issue with respect to adult family homes or recently been a couple of uh, operators of housing facilities, for lack of a better term, who are proposing boarding houses and trying to circumvent zoning or circumvent the limitation on the number of people you have in adult family homes by calling things a boarding house. And and packing more people in uh, and trying to take advantage of their housing restrictions on uh, local zoning. It's just come up as an issue?
I I haven't heard of that, but I I will.
We're over the Gig Harbor area, it didn't get off the ground so far, but they're trying.
Yeah, there's really clear state law of guiding um, the use and laws around adult family homes. So if it is gonna be called something different and if it would be licensed as something different, um, there would be very different laws according to that. And and then the individual, the provider, wouldn't be eligible to receive someone as a patient at an adult family home. So I I'm intrigued, I haven't heard anything about it, I'm just, it doesn't seem very promising, I guess. Terms of the business model.
To me, it sounded like somebody who's who isn't necessarily worried about complying with, right, the rules.
Was that to expand the definition from an adult family home from one to six to one to eight, is that what it was?
Yeah, we was trying to, well, we're not gonna be licensed as adult family home, we're we're gonna, we're gonna build this out as, we're gonna modify the structure and it's gonna be a boarding house in residential zone and you can't tell us to limit it because we can define what a, you know, a family or a group is and it's not adult family home. So the states aren't gonna tell us to limit to six and we're gonna build something where we're gonna house ten people what was one residential house.
Anything else, Shelley? Oh, please, Ms. Mar, yep.
Okay, um, I sit on the sex offender policy board and and had some interest in fifty one sixty three. And I know there are, that this is um, this is a, this is a good summary and uh, short and sweet and legislators, you've gotta be in and out. But I'm curious about the, about um, what's going on behind the scenes with the four proposed solutions. The first one, yeah, um, there, the sex offender policy board was activated again, we're work and there is I I'm sure you know this, there's there's a committee to um, to study the implementation of fifty one sixty three. And we actually voted yesterday to recommend three changes to uh, to go forward to the legislature in our in our report, that's also due on December first. Um, and those were two two inadvertently well-meaning provisions that were added on the floor that were not not quite um, working out as 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 planned. And then um, around some zoning and the five hundred foot rule. And then also um, asking for clarity around around the already distinct definition between secure facility generally and what and and the rules and provisions around the S C T, C T F. Um, so anyway, that 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 being said, I'm curious about number one. Um, because I would, because if there's actually something that we can recommend a change to to fifty one sixty three, I would love to see that reworded. Because of course we want to institute fair share policies, of course we do, fifty one sixty three said we would. But there are so many things in our ecosystem, so many things in our infrastructure that are fighting against fair share policies, what can we actually do? What can we, as the City of Lakewood, actually help the state move that forward? So I'm very curious and and very interested in being more prescriptive or specific about what, about what proposal to the language, especially since the sex offender policy board is already going to be recommending changes to the legislation. With number two, tell me a little bit more about disclosing publicly accessible and relevant criminal history during the discharge planning process. What what does that get us? So that's a proposal that was brought forth by, I believe, Representative Levitt a couple of years ago. Um, and it's actually one of the proposals that made it nearly all the way through the process. Essentially, what that would do is ensure that a provider that is choosing to accept an individual being released from state care is fully aware of that individual's uh, history. And so knows that they have adequate staffing and adequate resources to be able to address the circumstance that may arise. Okay, that is, the language there is similar to some things that the that the sex offender policy board is working through. You know, what what does DSHS know? And then then at some point, fifty one sixty three is calling for a much larger, robust community, the access from the community, access by the community to this information, the information that's that's not HIPAA, HIPAA protected. And so um, so I'm curious about the about the distinction there.
Yeah, that's a that's a good question. So the the legislation that was originally proposed would not provide that information to the general community. It would only be released to the provider that is being considered as the placement. Okay.
The housing provider or the or the other treatment partners?
And I think as proposed, it was the housing provider, but I I imagine other treatment providers would be interested in that information too. Perhaps an enhancement to that.
Okay, that would be interesting for more information. Also, okay, so for number three, procuring additional services within a regional service area if existing services are not adequate. Again, consider incentivizing providers in underserved areas, which I'm I'm not sure if if that last sentence is actually in fifty one sixty three, but I know that we we talked a lot about that. The the, as you noted in number four, there's a credentialing issue. And so in in order for a provider to serve this population, they have to have certain credentials. They have to have certain certifications and they have to go through a process. And it is a tad bit onerous and it has been, there was a lot of talk about how to how to lessen those restrictions or to make them more easily accessible. Because not only is it more difficult to be a treatment provider for this population, it's also it doesn't pay as well. And so there aren't enough treatment providers, period, end of story, full stop. So procuring additional services sounds great, but I I'm skeptical that it can actually happen because of the credentialing issue. And so I would like to know a little bit more if that if that's actually attainable and there's something I'm missing. Great. That's wonderful news. But I'm I'm skeptical that that's that that is actually something that we can make happen.
Yeah, great question. Both. Well, I would I would say number three in particular is an item that if it seems like it's vaguely worded, it's because it it is. We're that's there because we're wanting to build upon the outcome of the report that was funded with the money secured in just the last budget cycle, last supplemental budget. So the report that is being worked on, being led by Department of Commerce, identifying the geographic locations of facilities. Residential facilities would be phase one, and then phase two of the report will be the treatment facilities that are necessary to accompany someone who's being placed in in a residential care setting. And so depending on the outcome of that report, it may show that there's gaps in services in Spokane County. And so the state needs to do whatever it takes to procure those services in the area where they don't exist. And you're right, procure services is not necessarily a a specific tangible item. But depending on what the gap is, is it is it housing or is it treatment? Oh, oh, yeah. And and where is it? You know, there's we're we're intentionally leaving ourselves flexibility to be able to support whatever proposal is brought forward that will move the needle on this topic. And those proposals will be dependent on what the report includes.
Okay. That makes that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that. I would love for that to be a part of the narrative. I don't know, obviously, I don't know that it has to be here on this sheet, but but we're expecting, we're expecting a report to come out to help to help explain more about about the issues. We've also, the sex offender policy board will also have a report talking about the the practicalities of fifty one sixty three in the in the year or so that's passed. And so so more information to come. And we are, and we we as the city of Lakewood are anxiously awaiting working on that. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, if I may just sort of summarize where I think we're at to see if we can transition to the discussion on the policy document. So from the feedback that you all have provided thus far, I'm hearing a desire to add public safety as a priority and elevate that from the policy document. Based on your comments around the H Barn project, perhaps also adding that project into the policy document as a long term objective. So that it remains on our radar as capital budget dynamics evolve. And and then also updating and stating more specifically, perhaps in the one pager on the geographic equity from discharge of state facilities, the the two reports that Councilmember Palmer just outlined. Those are the, and Shelley, anything I missed?
Yeah, and then updating as well on the geographic equity one pager and perhaps summary to that, the reference to the safety of the staff and residents in those facilities. So
I think that's accurate. Looking around the room. Mr. Brandstad.
Yeah, I would just note that we're a week early in in terms of doing it, but that older indicated that climate environmental is liable to be a a place of where the legislature is has some openness suspending some money. And we're a a week away from approving a three year climate action plan based on our comprehensive plan. Adding that chapter in and in in the work of our planning commission to be able to go and do that. And of the fifteen items that are on that action plan, not all of them need need dollars, but I think that a review of those fifteen items to see if there is an ask that we would want to make from the legislature to move forward, what we hope to accomplish in the next three years would be something to evaluate and and consider adding in because I didn't see it was just too early to get that into this because we were just in its but it's but it we're right on the cusp of wanting to launch it the first three years of our of 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 concerted action. And we should probably take a look if there's something that we that we want to ask because compared to some previous years, we're not asking for that much right now.
Mr. Coffield, off the top of your head, can you think of anything that would be a a budget ask on the the climate initiative at this time?
I do not, Mayor. Right now, our focus has been getting the policy in place. And then, as you know, implementation, our recommendation is part of the proposed budget. Presuming you take action in the next, even this Monday evening, which is what's before you, then implementation would begin in two thousand twenty three. So at this point in time, in terms of state funding, I don't have anything at the top of my head. So
Okay, great.
I I don't know if we would have something for this legislative agenda, but certainly for again, you know, this is a two year process. So maybe this time next year, we would have something more concrete. But right now, I don't, I don't have anything at the top of my
Very good. I think you've summarized the policy positions, at least for purposes of legislative agenda. So we can move on to the policy manual.
Okay, so this is a much larger document than the one we just reviewed. So I am going to go line by or item by item in the policy manual, starting on page four, under the Housing and Homelessness Services section. But I'm only going to provide extended explanation to the topics that have changed. Since this is an updated policy manual from last biennium, there's a number of items that have carried over. So the first item there, we've already discussed, is the city's capital budget request in coordination with Lhasa. The next is a new addition. It is an outline of the South Sound Affordable Housing Partners Support Monitor opposed statements. I think you're all familiar with that group, and this is just adding into the the city's policy manual, those positions. There is no change to the language in the Quality Affordable Housing section. And the statement on middle housing is new as of this year. And essentially, what we're trying to communicate with this statement is that the city supports middle housing and is wanting to increase zoning for middle housing. But that there are unintended consequences when the state makes local land use decisions, particularly as it regards to middle housing.
The only thing you might add there, whether this definitely is appropriate, but we we talked about cottage housing and duplexes, triplexes, multifamily housing allowed on city residential lots, but we also have the accessory dwelling unit piece that I think should probably be included in there. We had a discussion the other night and how that might relate to the county policy manual and addressing some needs for some change of policy with regard to sewer availability and sewer hookups to facilitate getting some of that actually done. So I think we should include ADUs.
Great. Yeah, that's an excellent addition. We can incorporate that. Uh, there's no
Mr. Brandstad.
Yeah, in in the discussion, the 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 write up on 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 middle housing in the in the last sentence, where it says the city opposes legislation that dictates land use and housing zoning at a statewide level. I I think that I would really think we should consider also saying that we're opposed to dictating things at a citywide level as well. What do you mean by that? Well, for instance, saying passing legislation that says that every single lot of a certain category in a city has to comply with certain level zoning, you know, we we have a lot of middle income in allowability. But we don't have it citywide. We have it in in areas where it seems appropriate. And a a a legislative directive that says every lot in a city over fifty thousand has to do this is you know, while that's not statewide, it's directing us to do something citywide that without looking at consequences and it relates to do we do those same sorts of things in the air corridor and 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 other things? So just inserting the term that we we don't want them to be prescriptive citywise for cities of our size particularly.
And just trying to think how that makes sense. Although I I hear what you're trying to articulate there, but I think the import of the language is we don't want the legislator legislature dictating through legislation basically fiat over local land use decisions, right? I think that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Randstad, you're saying exactly what we're trying to say with this language, and perhaps we can come back with more refined wording to ensure we're capturing what you're articulating.
In other words, we don't want to get rid of single family residential zoning in the city if we don't want to. We don't want the legislator to tell us that that zoning choice is going away for all cities over X, for instance.
Right, we can work on that.
Yes.
And there are no changes to the next three items on the page. So we'll be moving on to the next page and the next section, Community and Economic Development. The first topic is tax increment financing, and we are expecting there to be a follow on bill to the Tax Increment Financing Authority that the legislature passed in two thousand twenty one. And there have been a few communities that have been utilizing that authority and have noticed that there are some technical fixes that need to be made. And so this there will be a bill making those technical fixes. In addition, we'll be working with that coalition to make it more easily utilize, make it so that the city can more easily utilize that authority for the washout maintenance facility on Pacific Highway. The next statement on economic development tools has no change. No change to the statement on annexation. A new statement on Camp Murray boat launch improvements. I think many of you are aware, back in two thousand twenty, the city did an evaluation with Camp Murray on the possibility for annexation. The outcome of that report essentially determined that it would be costly for Camp Murray if that annexation were to occur. And so Camp Murray does not support annexation, but there is some ongoing exploration about what it may look like for partnership with the installation in the city to make improvements at the boat launch. The boat launch is open to the public and it's access to American Lake. The boat launch is currently managed by Department of Fish and Wildlife through a lease. And so this statement is essentially saying that there's ongoing conversations happening about how to make those improvements and make it a more enjoyable amenity for the public. The last three statements in the Community and Economic Development section are unchanged.
Can I just say something? Well, I'm actually on the boat launch item, they had a change in leadership. I apologize. I had to take a step away. I'm actually feeling pretty good about that. So I think that could be an emerging item later this year and into next session. So I just wanted to just point that out. They're dealing with some other priorities right now. But we have shared this language with them. They haven't said yay, they haven't said no, but based on the conversations that we've had, so so far so good. So.
Mr. Coffield. Is moving forward with that in terms of being able to assume the lease and then create a city park is a partial annexation annexation of just that parcel, a desirable or or necessary action?
So Councilmember, we haven't even gotten, the short answer is those could be possible solutions to get there. So we haven't come to any agreement with West with Camp Murray on on that. But what I'm saying is that they're open to the dialogue and continuing discussion. But as far as the mechanics, still to be to be determined.
Moving on to the next heading, which is Parks, Recreation and Community Services. That first statement, again, is a carryover from a priority on the legislative agenda. And the next section on Historic Fort Stillicum, this is a topic that has been in the policy manual previously, but we do have updated language. And the updated language just simply states that the city is encouraging the state to continue or undertake a joint exploration with the city and Historic Fort Stillicum Association to determine how best to preserve the fort. It's likely not something that would be ready in two thousand twenty three, but in the vein of planting the seed, this language is here for now.
I'd just like to add on to that. We see that as an emerging item as well that could move relatively quickly, perhaps in the next few months. We're going to be hopefully having some conversations with DSHS before the end of the year to see if this is, you know, in the past, they have stated that, yes, we're willing to have a conversation about this once the Western State Master Plan is in place. Now that that's happened, they're willing to come to the table, have a discussion about carving that area out. So again, I'm cautiously optimistic that I think we'll get some positive movement here in the next handful of months. Also wanted to point out that this language here, actually, the the association, the Historic For Stillicum Association actually helped draft this, so they're on board with us as well. Also, just want to point out, they've been experiencing a little bit of frustration with their relationship with DSHS and the buildings. And so I think I can I can interpret where their board is, which is they are supportive of working with the city to have this area become part of the city. I think that's probably at about a thirty thousand foot level where we are. But again, this is one that I'm cautiously optimistic about, and I think can move forward here in the next year or two.
The next topic is a general statement.
Mr. Brandstad has got a question.
Is this is this where we're going to insert something about the long term aspirations for the H Barn within this area of the policy manual?
That's correct. Yeah, that's where this would go.
Thank you.
And then the state funding section is again a a statement that's been in the policy manual previously, but we have updated the language to reference the improve various park improvements and grants that the city has been ranked for funding. So we would be advocating that those various grant programs get funded at a level that allows the city to receive the grants that you've applied for. The next section is Transportation and Infrastructure. And the first statement there is a statement regarding the city's right of way. We've seen bills in in the recent past, and we are anticipating a bill in this coming session on infringing upon local authority to make decisions about right of way. And so this is a broad statement that would allow us to engage and and be part of those. um, and be part of those negotiations. The next section um is on the I five South Sound Corridor improvements. There are a lot of transportation projects occurring along I five in the South Sound. And we have had various statements in the policy manual over the years, and so what we've done um in this proposal is to restructure it. Hopefully make it easier for um anyone who's reading this policy manual to understand what we're saying. Um, so there is um, the the list of projects um is from the north to the south along I five, and there is also a map um that is in your packet that coordinates with each of these projects. Um, the I five JBLM corridor improvements, of course, are funding from the twenty fifteen Connecting Washington package. This is a general statement about implementation, ensuring that future decisions made do not jeopardize those investments. Um, that coordinates to the green um indicator on the map. The I five HOV lanes, it's um the state in the most recent transportation package allocated funding to extend that program um from Thirty Eighth Street in Tacoma down to Gravelly Lake. Um, and this statement essentially says that the city supports extending that even further all the way down to Mounts Road. Um, if there is a dedicated fifth lane so that we don't recreate the bottleneck at Thorn Lane that was addressed with the project just above. In order for that fifth lane extension to occur, there will need to be a restructuring of the main gate interchange, and so that's the third bullet point is um, exit one twenty restructuring. And then the final statement is Mounts Road South heading into Tom Water. Um, this has been a South Sound Military and Communities Partnership Priority for several years. Um, and this is essentially saying if there's going to be improvements all along the I five corridor and expansion of the system, let's not create another bottleneck at Mounts Road. Let's continue with the improvements with moving south.
Um. I got a question for you on this.
Okay.
Maybe something Mr. Anderson can speak to. You know, there the interconnector road between Gravelly and Thorn is, I guess, in some final negotiations or discussions between that and the property owners, including the Gulf and Country Club. Is there any value in asserting a statement that the city supports completing that project and the state's efforts to work with the property owners to accommodate concerns over safety and security of adjacent private property in the construction and completion of the interconnector road?
We could we could definitely incorporate that.
Yeah, what do you think? Is something worthy of putting in there or not? Or does it matter?
I I agree. I it shouldn't be an issue of class warfare. It should be
safety and security.
I mean, it goes with the concrete wall and telecom concrete wall and the base side. And uh, it actually would help preserve the quality of of open space in historic areas.
The specific request is the the I know the right term is a concrete sort of the wall or whatever you want to call it, yeah, across there that has the decorative stuff like you see on the other side in JBLM, again, sound attenuation, safety, security, that kind of thing.
Yep.
We have been requested to support the property owners' efforts in positive negotiation. I think that's where this statement should go.
Okay, yeah, I think it makes the most sense in the bullet point on the I five JBLM corridor improvement since it is connected to that overall project. So we can put that in there. Um, next topic on infrastructure funding has no change as well as the next statement on limiting additional freight on the Point Defiance bypass. The final topic, the bottom of the page, is future commercial airfields. So the legislature created the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission, or CAC, and they've been tasked with providing a recommendation for a single new airport in uh Washington State west of the Cascades. And within proximate location of the majority of the population, um, their recommendation is due to the legislature next year, or yes, next year. Um, so not relevant necessarily for the twenty twenty three legislative session, but they did have a major milestone just yesterday where they had to provide um, a narrowing of their two recommendations. Their two recommendations to date are, one, extending um capacity at Payne Field in Everett, and two, further exploring Breedfield sites at three locations, two in Pierce County, one in Thurston County. Um, and so this statement in the policy manual is essentially stating that we are tracking that issue, closely monitoring it. Um, and I don't anticipate any legislative discussion on that topic this session, but again, it's there because this is a biennial manual.
True.
To be most succinct, the fix is in. Uh, the uh, King County is essentially excluded. Payne Field has a rather uh successful lobbying uh effort. And it was, it's a conclusion of Pierce County that it was a foregone conclusion that it was the legislative designation this or study was going to be Pierce County where there's absolutely no infrastructure. So I think we have to have kind of a heightened awareness of what is going on and how this interfaces with JBLM is particularly important. Uh, JBLM has a a nonvoting representative on the committee, so they've been monitoring it. Uh, I just spoke with the chief of staff yesterday. Uh, their official position at this point is we're looking into it. Um, but they just started uh a more extensive review of what impact the uh, what they call the what I think it's Pierce County East and Pierce County Central or South uh sites might have, and and it's almost inconceivable that you could put a commercial airport at either one of those sites and not have a um a direct impact on uh their helicopter training areas. So um, more more to come, but uh eh, one of the things that we need to be aware of uh on that heightened interest is that there's a legislative mass north of us who would think that shutting down helicopter training would be a good thing. And for our own economic and in interest here and national security interest, shutting down helicopter training would or reducing it would not necessarily be a good thing. So uh, where to come. So if this becomes an accelerated issue, we might have to take a more active role.
Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you. I would um echo Councilmember Anderson's um comments. You know, since this language was developed particularly in the last week or so, there's been more information. As a matter of fact, with our SSMCP hat on, um, we were exchanging some emails in the last day or so regarding the two Pierce County locations as well as the Thurston County location. And what comes to mind is, for example, the intersection of of uh, this kind of gets to what Councilmember Anderson's saying. PRC did that analysis of the intersection of air traffic between Sea-Tac and um McCord Field, and I it's 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 amazing, you know, the level of air traffic on a on a on a minute by minute basis that occurs within that area. And now having another airport, if you think about it, having another airport either in central or east Pierce County or even down in Thurston County, and then I mean, how does that, how does that play out?
Yeah.
And so, long story short, you know, this body might want to consider actually taking a position now that you know, opposing either having a new regional airport in Pierce County or Thurston County um, might be a good thing to do, and I would actually recommend that you do that. I'd also like to point out that throughout my career, um, I'm somewhat familiar with this whole issue about new airports. And there is, there there are other options that don't seem to be looked at. You know, one, because you know what's driving this too is the whole issue of commercial air traffic, um, uh, commercial um air cargo. And um, you know, if you if you look to the east in Moses Lake, there's a huge airstrip out there. It's one of the longest in the country. It was um used by Boeing and other airliners to test um seven forty sevens. And that no longer is being used. So there's huge capacity out there. And you know, there's been discussion in the past about, you know, maybe moving all of air cargo to that location or a good portion of it, or expanding that place even for air passenger for international and then running some kind of a train back to the Puget Sound. There are other options that have been looked at going back thirty, forty years um, that I think, you know, could be more viable than just.
What's the issue with one over Gig Harbor? Is it just too short?
Yeah, oh, then actually then on top of that, actually, yeah, you have Gig Harbor, you have actually have Gig Harbor and you have Thune Field, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, in the middle of Pierce County as well. So I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm not an aircraft expert, but that's that's a lot of planes going to be flying around both fixed wing and 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 rotor.
I could tell you those are, you know, both owned by Pierce County and they're both excluded uh immediately for uh, basically from real estate issues the size. Thune Field is a general aviation airport, which my opinion would be better off as a housing development. It's a vestige of a private airport. It's very, very limited in size. Gig Harbor would need another thousand feet of runway in order to allow a small jet, a private jet, to take off with a full load of fuel. Uh, the uh, the family that uh own the art, basically funded the art museum, German, uh, no, forgetting the name.
I know you're talking.
Starts with an H, Barlight's client. Uh, eh, they uh pay still, the 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 next generation still brings their plane in there, but they have to take off with half a load of fuel, go up, top it off. And it's uh, up in Seattle and then go, then take their their long flight. That thousand feet would not accommodate cargo, even if there was enough real estate, so.
Got it.
Um, and there's huge public objection to that, although I think for sure that one, it would be a good idea to put another thousand feet there.
Say that. We seem to be paying attention to this, but this seems to fly in the place of the Growth Management Act two by um encroaching on, you know, rural and semi-rural areas.
No pun intended.
Which was supposed to be protecting and preserving, but I I'm just just saying.
Right.
And there's absolutely no infrastructure. No sewer water.
It looks like we need to look at that page ten or twenty five or whatever it is, where it starts with the sentence, the city supports this decision, maybe drop the the city supports this decision and and say the city opposes the use of JBLM. Now, we were not implicitly supporting the decision of the other three sites that are referenced in the prior sentence.
Or I was hearing the city opposes the use of JBLM as a commercial airfield or any location that would impede the operations of JBLM.
That would be best. Yeah.
Should we move on?
Yep.
Okay, so the next stormwater and culvert funding is no change, and the statement electric vehicle charging stations is a new addition. As you may know, there's significant funding at the federal and state level for electric vehicle charging stations. This statement is simply saying that the city is um looking to other entities, Pierce Transit, Sound Transit, Wash Dot, to be the lead in 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 utilizing that. Um, the section on finances, the first two statements have no change. We have on the city financial liability for indigent defense, updated the numbers um so that that is reflective of most recent numbers. No change to the statement on unfunded mandates. Into the public safety section, we have a new statement on body worn cameras. Just last session, the legislature allocated a hundred thousand dollars to begin a body camera grant program. And this is a statement saying that the city supports that um, supports that program, increased investment into that program. We have a new statement on hiring and retention for public safety officers. Um, as you guys know, everyone has been struggling with retaining and hiring public safety officers, and so this is a statement in support of state level policies that can be changed um to help with that. Um, no state, no change to the statement on binding interest arbitration and a new statement on vehicular pursuits. As Sydney Manager Caulfield mentioned earlier, uh, Association of Washington Cities has vehicular pursuits as one of their top legislative priorities. Um, and our statement more or less mirrors what the association has adopted.
Our eh, as you go through the list, there's also a statement on Blake. Given the earlier discussion, we would combine those two statements into a statement around public safety on the top priority list.
Great.
The next statement is um carryover from the legislative agenda. No change to authority to appoint municipal judges or traffic enforcement cameras. We do have updated language on Basic Law Enforcement Academy reflecting um that there is an effort to regionalize the Criminal Justice Training Commission so that the PLEA Academy can be offered um in various locations around the state as opposed to just one. No change to the statement on jail and court costs. Um, carryover of language from the legislative agenda. No change to the remaining items on this page. The next section that has updated language is the Blake response, which Brianna just referenced. And again, this is an AWC priority, um, and we would be combining that in vehicular pursuits to add it to the legislative document legislative agenda. Into general government, no change about the statement on public records and open meetings. Moving into military affairs, we do have a a new section on the Defense Community Compatibility Account, and that's because the city of Lakewood has applied to that state grant program. Um, that program has not been funded by the legislature. And so we're uh, we would be advocating that the program be funded if it is funded, depending on where the city ranks in the program list. Um, which is still being developed by Commerce, the city would be eligible for a nine hundred thousand dollar grant towards purchase of properties in the North Clear Zone. Um, the next section is a summary of the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership Legislative Priorities. And I will note that those priorities are not formally adopted by the partnership yet. That will occur later this month, but those are their draft priorities as of now. And the last statement on the American Lake Veterans Golf Course Tax Exemption is unchanged.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Caulfield?
Just um a follow up comment. Um, I went back and looked at the climate change work plan that this body is going to be considering here um, on on Monday. So there's actually, there's two items, one which is actually already incorporated into your legislative agenda. And that's the continued support and leadership of the city of Lakewood in partnership with SSMCP as it relates to the I five Delta Project, which is one of the fifteen that's on the work plan. The other is, and Mr. Bucic is going to give you a status check on this on Monday evening, is the Clover Creek Flood Plane Engineering Study. And um, as you know, you've seen in the past, that that has the potential in a hundred year storm to flood I five. And so we've been working with a number of stakeholders on that, including Wash Dot. That could be, because I don't want to steal Mr. Bucic's thunder, but long story short, uh, some type of of infrastructure will potentially need to be built, perhaps a dam of some sort to mitigate or prevent a hundred year storm. And so who takes the lead on that is the city, is it Wash Dot, is a combination, to be determined. But that could be an item that ends up as a legislative, either policy manual item or even a priority in the next two to three years. So so those would be kind of two items. Just taking again a quick glance, Mayor, at your at your proposal.
Is that something you want to try to insert in the uh policy manual this year?
I I I until um, until actually the work of that committee is done in terms of what the actual proposed solution is, I I I would hold off on, I I would hold off on that, but certainly as part of the next update, or actually during the session, we can always add to this. So if 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 there's a, if in the first or second quarter, first quarter of two thousand twenty three, there's an understanding that yes, this is the solution we're going to move forward with, we could certainly add it at that point in time.
Great. We love adding to your workload mid-session. Yep. It's going to be so fun.
Just just do it after a cutoff deadline so you make our job really easy.
Exactly. Well, that concludes your work, right, today?
Yes.
And we made it under Brianna's wire.
Yeah, just in time. I was expecting you to leave a little more buffer.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Thank you for having us this morning.
Good to see you. Thanks for your work, and um I'm sure we'll be checking in. So yeah, exactly. Why don't we take a couple minutes stretch break so we can move from state to federal, because I think Jake is next, right? So why don't we just uh take a quick break for two minutes and we'll get Mr. Johnson set up?
So why don't we just uh take a quick break for two minutes and we'll get Mr. Johnson set up? All right, counsel, let's uh reconvene so that Mr. Caulfield can go back home and mow his lawn. I have, I have work to do as well. Yeah. He deals with Tag Row every Monday night. Well, welcome, Mr. Johnston. Michael, you gonna give us the, the intro here?
Sure, Mayor. Next up on the agenda, we have Mr. Jake Johnston of the Johnston Group to go over the city's twenty twenty-three federal legislative priorities, and with that, I will hand it over.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council members. Uh, forgive the mask, but I live with uh an immunocompromised family, so taking a preponderance of caution. I know it's a little difficult sometimes to hear me uh through a mask, so just, I don't know, give me a high sign if uh you need me to repeat something. Move it closer to me. Excellent.
There you go.
Um, I'll take that as the high sign. Thank you. We're all Mariner fans these days. Um, thank you again for the opportunity to come uh and talk to you about the federal agenda. I think uh, we, we entered this conversation really taking a moment to reflect on how far we've come, because it's been a really successful year in twenty-two for the city of Lakewood. Uh, first and foremost, the city's ongoing work over the past five, six, seven years has really resulted in the city being perceived in DC as the trusted municipal partner to your delegation. You're the one who brings solutions to hard problems, to things like the Clear Zone. You rally support for policy changes and legislation that frankly fit the city's agenda better. And the, the proof is in the pudding. We have brand new federal laws in place that the city has proposed and passed. We have funding coming to the city. We're in line to receive two and a half million dollars this year to complete the South Tacoma Way project. And again, this isn't necessarily the result of your federal lobbyist. It's a result of the city and the city's priorities, the city's team, and the work that you've done to put the projects forward at the right time and the right place and the right way. And on that note, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't really point out how valuable the staff at the city of Lakewood are in making this work. It is a privilege to get to work with John and Michael and Paul and just the, the people in your, in your office, frankly, that are, that are doing the heavy lifting on a day-to-day basis. Uh, it makes the ability for your state and your federal legislative teams to do their jobs so much better. So thanks for that.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Um, this year, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna blow through kind of where we're at real quick and just get into the agenda, but I do want to mention that this year we are in line to receive two and a half million dollars, thanks to the support of Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, to complete the South Tacoma Way project, and we're really excited about that.
Are there any other uh legislative pieces that need to come together for that puzzle, uh, be complete?
No, right now, we, we're, we were included for funding. In the House passed a bill, the Senate uh has put its bill together, but it has not passed the Senate. Right now, we're in a continuing resolution where we're pushing the budget to the second week of December. We expect, uh, we've been told by all three offices, uh, Cantwell, Murray, and, and Strickland, that uh we've got a clear path to funding on this. So while that's not a not a fait accompli at this point, it's uh, we're, we're
As good as it gets.
We're, we're as good as it can be at this point. Um, secondly, we also have language in the NDAA, which is the National Defense Authorization Bill. And this is policy language that is helping to clarify some of the challenges we've had in the North Clear Zone. And uh, we can get into the specificity of that if you'd like, but, but essentially we're doing a complicated process in a new way with multiple agencies at DOD. And they want to do things slow and deliberate, and frankly, the cost of commercial property transactions is moving at a far faster pace than what uh these traditional processes can do. Also, DOD has been reluctant to fund things like uh helping to relocate the business to other locations within the community so we can keep those employees working in the city of Lakewood. They've also been reluctant to assist with things like demolition costs and other kind of acquisition, things that are a, a necessary part of doing commercial property transactions right now. So again, thanks to SSMCP's leadership, we've got a really great uh tactical tailor story to tell. That's the first transaction that's taken place in, in the North Clear Zone. But that process took a lot longer and cost a lot more than it should have. And so we're using the lessons from that uh to introduce kind of streamlined language into the NDAA so that hopefully future transactions, we've established a precedent for them and we can mobilize them a little bit faster. That's the idea. Once again, your delegation has stood up for the city on this regard. Uh, Congresswoman Strickland took that language to the, to the committee. Uh, Chairman Adam Smith, who chairs the Armed Services Committee in the House of Representatives, put that language into the committee bill, and that is what has passed the House at this time. So again, we're still waiting for a final NDAA to make it through the, the legislative session this year, but we're, we're, we're batting two for two so far. Um that's kind of where we're at with our twenty-two agenda as we turn the corner into twenty-three. Are there any questions about twenty-two where we stand before we move forward?
Mr. Anderson. Yeah, uh, I heard very recently the NDAA is gonna be delayed for a while.
Yep.
Um, could you uh give me that language? I, I don't recall hearing it come by the uh Association Defense Communities, uh, FOAC, their federal advisory. And if you, you have any ideas as to who else around the country might benefit from similar language, let me know that. Maybe I could get uh some additional support from the side or make sure it doesn't slip out a little more.
I'll get it to you.
Thanks.
Great. Well, maybe before we turn the corner to twenty-three, uh, I wanted to give you a quick, much like your state team did at the, at the, at the state level, give you a quick uh environmental overview of kind of what, what we're facing with our federal agenda. And for anybody who's watching the news, and I don't care, I don't care what channel it is, uh, it is uh unfettered chaos in DC most of the time. Um, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. So a lot of our work is uh I know we're on public record and I apologize for saying this, but a lot of our work is being the adults in the room. You know, we're in the business of making our communities stronger. We're in the business of building things. We're in the business of making investments that pay off. And we sometimes have to uh, have to offer good solutions to a complicated process uh and, and navigate the, the way things are back there. So the good news is that we are working in bills that are generally considered to be must-pass bills. These are bills that generally don't get bogged down, despite who's in control of either chamber, despite what the personalities in the room are. These are the appropriations bills. It's the only thing the Constitution requires Congress to do every year. And they generally get it done, not on time, but eventually. Uh, and the NDAA comes up every year. So these are the bills that, that we uh play in, quite frankly, and, and you know, have an opportunity to be successful by keep keeping the relationships and the trust and the reputation that the city has built. That's, that's core to our strategy at this point. So as we head into twenty-three, we're also looking at the recent investments that have been made at a federal level. And this is the, you know, between the ARPA dollars that came in as a part of the COVID um relief funds, as uh when you include the infrastructure bill that was passed in December of twenty and kind of implemented uh in twenty-one and early twenty-two, and the climate and inflation bill that just passed in August, you are seeing the largest investment uh of, of public dollars into traditional infrastructure programs in the history of the world. Period. There's trillions of dollars that have, that have gone into these federal Period. There's trillions of dollars that have, that have gone into these federal spending programs. And that's the opportunity that we kind of enter our agenda with. And so we're gonna talk about this more in, in more detail, so save some of your questions, but in a nutshell, our problem is that this influx of funding, where it goes into traditional programs and boosts them up in their spending capabilities, but doesn't change the underlying competitive nature of that program, it perpetuates problems where we as a city have a finite access to some of these funds just due to the program design. We're gonna talk a little bit more about this later. And for the new programs that are being set up, we really want to get in on the front end of the programs so we don't end up having a program set up to ostensibly meet city objectives and goals, but there's too much of a burden or there's too many roadblocks, so it, it makes it unusable for the city of Lakewood. And that's, that's really the crux of our dynamic. And part of that crux is that there's a belief system among your federal offices that they have just put more money than ever into infrastructure and city programs. Therefore, all your problems have a viable solution. And the reality is that a lot of these programs are not today accessible to the city of Lakewood. And so part of our, part of our agenda is closing that perception delta between what they think they've done and how we can access the programs and then suggesting solutions on how to, how to tweak those programs to make them usable tools for the city of Lakewood. And you're not alone in this. You are, you, you're joined by cities of your size kind of throughout the state in, in this effort as well. That's kind of the climate that we, that we walk into. Um, one more note is, you know, elections are always important, and you heard, um, Shelley and Brianna talk a little bit about, about that at the state level. At the federal level, you know, right now, there's a zero vote majority in the Senate, and there is a four vote majority in the House. It is as close as Congress has ever been. And control of both chambers is on the ballot this fall, and I think it both, control of both chambers is, is within the margin of error. So we have to look at some what-if scenarios. The, the conventional wisdom three weeks before the election, and again, take that for what it is, is that the Democrats will not control the House in, in next year, but they will retain control of the Senate. That's the CW as of today. It'll change tomorrow. Um, if that is true, you know, it means that we are looking at only the must-pass bills in Congress getting done. I don't see a lot of other opportunity for movement. If Democrats retain control of both chambers, I think you're gonna see a lot more work with the Biden administration to try to implement some of these infrastructure programs and to deliver some of these funds out to communities in better ways. So with that, um, we also have to look at our, our delegation. And again, this is a, an if-then statement, but if the Dems keep control of the House, Adam Smith, for your, your neighbor in Washington's, um, congressional district ninth, just, just next door, will continue to chair the House Armed Services Committee with jurisdiction over the defense bill. That is a phenomenal asset for the, for the state of Washington and for the city of Lakewood specifically, given our proximity to JBLM. Also in the House, we have, if the Democrats retain control, we have the Chair of the House Progressive Caucus in Washington's seventh congressional district and the Chair of the Democratic Moderate Caucus called the New Democrat Coalition in Washington's first congressional district. And Congressman Larson from the second congressional district is in line to chair the Transportation Committee. And right now, we have three members on the, up from the House, uh, on the House Appropriations Committee. So we've got as much juice as any delegation regardless of its size, and that's a phenomenal place for us to be. If the Democrats retain control of the Senate, Patty Murray is in line to be the Chair of the Appropriations Committee. And Senator Cantwell will continue to chair the Science, Commerce, and Transportation Committee. This is akin to the Scoop and Maggie Days, and we simply don't, you, you cannot get better positioned in terms of implementing the city's agenda. We've got the people in leadership positions to get the job done. So that's exciting. But elections have consequences, and we'll see what happens. Um, any questions on the environment before we turn the corner here? Okay. Um, our federal agenda is, is before you. Uh, unlike the state agenda that has a lot of different specific policy objectives, these are more of guideposts and strategic objectives that we look for, look to follow. And the first one is always the most important one, and it's bringing federal funding to the city of Lakewood. How do we match city infrastructure priorities and spending priorities with federal support? And how do we do that in the, in the way that doesn't frankly obligate the city into programs or resources that it doesn't have? So we will continue to do that. Uh, next year, we are looking at, once again, at the congressionally-directed spending process colloquially known as earmarks. And we'll be partnering with, uh, LASSA on a, on a LASSA approach to bring two and a half million dollars in federal funding to support that project. Um, we're still at the, uh, we're still at the beginning stage of this process from my standpoint. I, I know the city's been working on this for a very long time. I'm relatively new to this, this project, and I'm very, very excited about it. This is in line with all three of your delegation priorities. It's in line with the right kind of spending that they want to do with federally earmarked support. And it is simply a great project with phenomenal partners at the state, the county, and the local level. So I think it's a, I, I think it is a class act project to bring to the delegation for federal support, and I don't know if we can win it. I don't know if we can win support two years in a row out of, out of the federal earmarking process, but, uh, I can't think of a better candidate to push. And just a quick note on that. Do, do you remember our conversation from a year ago? Why would you? About how earmarks work? Members of Congress can put a finite number of projects forward every year for congressional support. And in the House, it's limited to 10 total projects. Members of Congress are getting about 120, 140 projects for consideration. They have to winnow that list down to 10 to put that list forward to the Appropriations Committee, of which they get about six or seven funded. That's just the math over, over the two-year cycle so far. So for us to win funding for South Tacoma Way, it means we were one of those 10 projects selected. And these aren't just transportation projects. These are across all issue areas, over all subject areas. So we got South Tacoma Way prioritized by Congressman Strickland, and, and, you know, again, we, we seem to have, have cleared the hurdles that we need to clear so far. We, I think the LASSA project is the best project that we can have to clear those hurdles once again. And I'm really excited to work on it with you. Um, the second part of federal funding is we are recommending that the city pursue a RACE grant for the Green Loop project in the amount of $25 million. And a quick word about RACE. Um, RACE was formerly known as the Build Program, and before that, it was known as the Tiger Program. This is a program that was established in 2009 and up until 2022 had never funded a project for a city between 10 and 75,000 in population size. So we've been working for years with a coalition of other medium-sized cities in the state of Washington to create a set aside. So there would be a tier of funding set aside for medium-sized cities in this program. Because the program is perfect for the types of infrastructure investments that we want to do. The problem is when we compete with not just Seattle and Tacoma, but we're competing with Chicago and LA and New York, we can't compete on a per capita basis. That's where our, our scoring just falls apart. So after a couple of years of elevating this problem, we made incremental progress in the bipartisan infrastructure bill. That bill authorized the RACE program, uh, for five years, and for the first time created a tier of funding in it that said that half of all RACE grants had to go to cities below 200,000 in population size. Now, that's not the number we want. That's not the tier that we think is the, is the right tier, but for the first time, we have bent the curve with the Department of Transportation to create kind of at least an acknowledgement that cities that are smaller in size, and not that Lakewood's small, have a disproportionate competitive advantage in this program. So the result is in 2022, uh, six projects in Washington State were funded through this project, through this program, and two medium-sized cities won funding for the very first time. They were the city of Linwood and the city of Bothell. And they've got projects that frankly look a lot like the city of Lakewood. They, they have a growing community just like us. They have housing challenges. They've got economic development challenges. And they've got infrastructure, which is the underpinning element to facilitate the development of these, of these solutions. So working with your team, working with Paul and working with John and Michael, you know, we really think the Green Loop is a, a viable project to put forward for consideration into this, into this, into this funding, uh, opportunity. It's going to be a very competitive program, uh, but it's also one that we can continue to build support for and resubmit if we miss the first funding set.
Is it possible, when you submit for something like this at the $25 million level, that they could come back and say, yes, but I'm at 10, or maybe we'll do 12 or whatever? Or is it, you know, 100% go or no-go?
Um, yeah, there, there, there hasn't traditionally been a negotiation. I mean, we, it's, it's incumbent upon us to put forward the need
Right.
and to kind of understand what the funding range requirements are. You know, 25 is pretty much a cap for the program, for the type of projects that we'd be looking at. And then we've got a percentage match that we have to meet at our end. We've got different, you know,
Got it.
stages of development that we have to do. And frankly, the numbers are what they are. Uh, and the contingency component of these, given the inflationary pressure that we're all under, is, is really the driving force. So 25 sounds like a ridiculous amount of money, and it's just actually not that much, uh, to do a project of this size and scope.
As they say, batter up, you might as well take the swing.
That's, that's the recommendation. And for those of you who have worked with me for many years, uh, yes, I'm talking positively about the RACE program, and it is not a sign of the apocalypse. Do not change your channel. And the last thing, of course, is assuming that we, uh, win the South Tacoma Way financing, uh, which should happen in December of this year, tracking the implementation of that grant, making sure that the city has everything in place through, uh, the grant portal agreements, and that we are meeting, uh, the requirements both with, uh, PSRC and the state on the tip requirements for that will be a, a component of our work as well, essentially delivering the 2.5 once, once it's been put into place.
I'm gonna ask another question on the, the RACE program ask, which I thi, I think is a fair one to pursue. It's been a key component of our downtown suburbia plan. Has Congresswoman Strickland's staff been briefed on this yet?
No.
Okay, so that's our next step after we adopt this priority, because I think they can be very helpful if they're, you know, physically walked through it, briefed, uh, as Congresswoman Strickland tells me every time we meet, we are her number one municipal city in terms of size in her district, and so she's very favorably uh, inclined to do what she can to help us.
Couldn't agree more. Also, you know, the thing I love about this project, and, and this applies to LASSA equally well, uh, but, but it's really a statement about the city of Lakewood. You, you so rarely bring a project forward that is a Lakewood project. You bring projects forward with this unbelievable amount of community support behind you. We had, I don't even remember, Michael, dozens of letters from agencies and support organizations, you know, in response to the South Tacoma Way project. And as a result, it wasn't a Lakewood project. It was a community investment project. And I think you're doing the same thing. LASSA sets up just so beautifully with all of the support you're getting at the state, regional, uh, and, 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 uh, just with other local agencies. And I think the Green Loop has that same potential. So to your point, Mayor, I think it's building that community support around a project like that and around a project application, and then frankly inviting your delegation to stand in front of that support and to deliver the project. That's, that's the strategy in a nutshell.
Very good. Any other questions, Mr. Anderson?
At the risk of being Debbie Downer, look, we, we look with optimism to the next year and maybe the year after. But, uh, there is, uh, I think a growing realization, uh, that with respect to federally funded programs, we are going to at some point reach what's being called the ARPA cliff. And since we aren't, since a large part of our budget is not in human services, I will use that as an example where, uh, so much money has been gone into rental assistance and temporary housing and food programs, uh, that, uh, the nonprofits who are contractors of the government in that regard have plus up. And at, at, at a point in the not-too-distant future, when the ARPA cliff happens, they're all going to be scrambling for a very limited pool to try to keep operations going at a level that is unsustainable. What do you think we have to look out for? What areas of funding? When that cliff happens, where, where should we not be a player unless we know that, that we can sustain whatever we're doing locally? Are there some pitfalls that are waiting for us, uh, if we embark on on a, an effort to get particular types of funding, uh, and then it goes, you know, it's like, it, it's most likely to go away, if that's the other way to put it.
Yeah, I think the program funding is gonna be stable for at least five years, but to your point, there, yeah, there's been a huge influx of, of funding, right? Uh, to support the, the human side of the equation, right? And that, that funding is, is not coming again. There's no political appetite to do a third round of that funding. And as evidenced by the fact that I'm the only one here in a mask, you know, for most people, you know, the pandemic is something we are living with and, and moving through. So the need for that type of pandemic-level support for the economy is not there. To answer your question directly, the thing that I am, I am worried about, we are limited at the city of Lakewood in terms of taking advantage of some of these federal funding opportunities by our own staff capacity. We don't have the capacity to manage multiple grants simultaneously. We just don't. So we have to really pick and choose the ones that we think are the best fits for, for the things that we have. And we have staffing issues at the city, right, in terms of open positions and finding qualified candidates that we are not alone in. I think that the counties are feeling the same crunch, uh, public hospitals are feeling the same crunch, public utility districts are feeling the same crunch. There is a, I, I think there is a workforce challenge that we all face, uh, as public institutions that is my biggest concern over the next short-term future. You know, will we be able to find qualified staff to keep moving these things forward? And, and again, you're not, the, I don't think Lakewood has a unique dynamic in this regard. I think there's, there is a shortage of, of public sector workforce out there. And, and there is no effort that I'm aware of to do job training or funding or programs like that to invest and, and replace that, that needed capacity.
Not that heavy, no.
Well, you asked.
Mr. Bransdanner?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yes, Johnson, I know in your, in your summary of the not so much specific actions, but general scope of how we're, we're, we're going, going to do that with, uh, Lakewood not being a full-service city, and so we, um, we are dependent upon, uh, for some really important services, uh, such as fire um, and, uh, you know, our, our water district and some others to be able to go, go in and do that. That, um, what role should the city take in advocating uh, or, uh, working to help our congressional delegations sort through potential earmarks of looking in the needs of those partners that contribute to the quality of life in the city? I mean, how parochial should we be?
I think specific to the earmark process, I think it's a fairly parochial process. Um, successful projects need a couple of, of really important things. Number one, they need to solve short-term public infrastructure problems. Number two, whether those are human services or kind of hard infrastructure. Number two, they have to be supported by a broad array of community groups and, and other public partners. Number three, they have to be one-time funding that completes a project. And so for things like, if there's a, if there's a service agency deficit with fire or emergency services or something like that, we need to understand the difference. We need to understand the difference between bringing in. A short term capital investment to solve a problem or to 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 fix a problem versus. To supplement a budget that is insufficient to meet the needs of the agency. Does that make sense?
It's it's similar to our philosophy of. Evaluating money that comes in and decided, is it? One time use or is it available to fund something ongoing?
Yeah. So I'm not sure if I answered your question or not, but I think that it's important for the city to lend its voice to other. Earmark requests led by other agencies that serve your community as well. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be a team play, I I wouldn't not be a team player. I would be a team player with any agency that is requesting federal funding to support your community. But there are things that the city is going to be the tip of the spear on. And there's some times where we're going to hold the spear with other people in the back. And so in terms of the things that we are leading the fight for. I think the recommendation is the Lhasa project rises to the top clearly as a recommendation for what we should pursue and get behind. But if. A county or of other agencies, or if if there's other projects that are putting forward federal funding requests. There's no reason that we can't be a letter of support and an endorser to that project as well. It does not diminish our work to support other projects.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Johnston on that there?
I think we're done with the federal funding part.
Very good.
Well, I joke with Shelley that I'm going to, uh, spend more time than her every, uh, every time we do this. Mostly, I'm I'm looking at spending one fifth of her time. That's my, that's my true goal. Want to talk about the other work that we're going to continue to do. I want to move to the clear zone. Uh, the clear zone, again, SSMCP and the county and the city and the state. I mean, there's so many partners working to solve the clear zone issues. But what the city of Lakewood has done is elevated its own reputation in this as being the un-sticker of stuck problems. And what I mean by that is the 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 amount of time and energy and focus and priority that the city has put on the clear zone issue. Has put the city in the driver's seat, even though SSMCP is the coordinating and organizing body. And when we go back to DC next year in person. Part of that strategy is going to be to continue to nurture those relationships with the Pentagon. To go over and meet with Air Force, to meet with Army Command, and to continue to unstick the problems that plague this process. And that's been our role in this, and we'll continue to play it. We've been really good at it. It's. A slow, methodical process, and that's its frustration. But the success is, you know. When the city asks for language in the NDAA to to unstick the process. You've built the trust and the reputation that the delegation wants to back you up. And that's a great place to be.
Taking a long time. CDBG monies, they don't go to Mr. Anderson. So we haven't. Obviously, put that on our agenda this year. It's been on the agenda in past years. What's the the view from the top on where the feds are going with increased CDBG funding?
Yeah, I think it's it is on the agenda. It's just, it's it's not a priority. Uh, it's kind of tucked into the back policy page of your of your thing. And the reason for that is CDBG was used primarily as the administration account for a lot of the ARPA dollars that came through. So you saw this radical inflection of of revenue into into those traditional programs. But it is not expected that those, uh, those are sustainable strategies, number one. And it's not expected that, uh, the CDBG program is is being plus up dramatically in the years to come. We will continue to work with NLC and AWC and all the Cs to continue to advocate for CDBG funding because it's. They're critical funds for the city, but also, as we've talked about, right? There's there's a certain threshold by which you need to fund the program to make it effective. Because there is an administrative cost to the city to manage the program. So if we're only funding, you know, a couple hundred thousand above that threshold, we can't do as much with that program as we'd like. But everything above that threshold of administrative support can be put directly to use in the community. And that's, that's, again, part of the story that we're telling and part of the education that we're doing with the delegation. I I'm not optimistic, uh, about our short term success in this one. I think this is, it continues to be on our agenda because it's important and we want to lend our voice to the project and the program. But I I. I I'm not seeing a coordinated strategy in DC to.
We can tell the story of some of the successes we've had with the, obviously, if asked, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, you had a point?
Yeah, two things, uh, Jake, yeah, I've I've actually seen the. Fluctuation of the CDBG money at the county level. It's. It's an order of magnitude difference. Do you see an actual settling point for that when ARPA money comes out? Or are we back to where we were and start all over again?
You know, I don't I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, uh, council member, but. You know, we we hit an all time low in the program in twenty seventeen, I believe. And then we we inched up a little bit after that. To restore it to roughly thirty five, forty percent of its all time high, which had been about five, six, seven years prior to twenty seventeen. And I see us continuing to inch up in that program. So I think I think we're level setting it somewhere in thirty to forty percent north of its low point. But, you know, God, I I. We haven't seen a budget for this year yet, you know, which which will not include the ARPA dollars in it, right? So this will be the first time that we'll see the CDBG budget item in. And here's my first question. Will it be eight percent greater than last year to keep pace with inflation? I'm guessing the answer is no. I don't know yet, we haven't seen the final number. But if that's true. You know, we just holding serve at kind of where we were before, I think should be our baseline expectation. I'm sorry to have negative views on this one, but.
Entirely different subject on a clear zone. End of the month, I'm. Putting on my, uh, ADC board member hat and going to Phoenix for a meeting. And the assistant secretaries for installations will be there, uh, with senior staff, civilian, uh, leadership. Is there, is there a a hot issue that's hung up somewhere that I should be aware of with respect to the clear zone that? Private meeting, some of these people might give us an opportunity to push.
I think I defer to Bill Adamson on the direct answer to that question. I am not aware of a specific problem at this point, and I'm looking at John.
Yeah, I'm I'm not aware of anything other than the normal bureaucracy right now.
I I would say that, I would say the message I would suggest, sir, is that. We have worked through a laborious process in a. Really heavy real estate market to close tactical tailor. And we learned a lot from that process. We learned what worked and we learned what didn't work from Army Command standpoint, right? And so we're taking those lessons and trying to institutionalize them so we can make the next set of transactions go smoother. And the city will continue to take the lead in terms of securing funding at the state, at the county and at the at the at the local level. To continue to assemble funding to acquire these properties in partnership with the Army and the Air Force. But we we've got to grease the process and 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 use the lessons that we've learned. You know, to make sure that we don't unduly delay it, because every delay in this process. Inflates the cost of the of the transaction price. The real estate market here is different than it is in. An Air Force base in North Dakota.
My, yeah, my concern is that, you know, there's been a, during COVID, there's been an entire leadership shift. All new assistant secretaries, uh. New MCOM commander. The only person that I recognize as being consistent is, uh. Kristen Thomas-Gard, who's the rep person. And she's going to be there, but I don't know that rep is a part of. What we're going to be doing in the future, we kind of bootstrap that in. So. It might be just part of an education process that have to start all over again.
Well, precedence is our friend in in this dynamic. Precedence is our friend in this dynamic. And the clarification language that we are including in the National Defense Act this year, I think should. The 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 theory is this will help the next set of transactions when they come through. I think we're going to continue to find problems in the process, and our job is to unstick those problems when they come up. I mean, that's.
Key now is to get resources for the next acquisition.
Right.
That's the key.
Right.
Well, very good, sir. Unless there's anything else on the federal side?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I want to talk real briefly about, uh, the DESEP program and the medium sized city set aside program in terms of what we're doing. The DESEP program, uh, for those of you who don't know, it's called the Defense Community Infrastructure Project. This was an idea born out of the city of Lakewood. Where essentially, a couple of years ago, five years ago at this point. There was a problem six years ago, John is whispering to me. The the, uh, the Defense Department, COVID, COVID makes time weird, John. The Defense Department had a prohibition against spending infrastructure dollars outside of the wire. Um, so even so, in a highly urbanized place like Lakewood. Where we have so, we have a hundred thousand people going, you know, through the gates at JBLM every day. We had a problem trying to essentially make the infrastructure investments that we needed to do to make sure that there was readiness at the base and that people could get to and from work. And all of those investments that we need to do to get to the base, especially when Northport opened. And you've got, you know, the cross town kind of traffic going through. We didn't have a funding program that we could go for to essentially assist the city in making the investments that we needed to make. So the city brought this project forward, and I won't bore the council with. The amount of time it took and how hard John worked on this and the former mayor. Uh, but we got it done. And we got it done with with a pilot program essentially of a hundred million dollars set up at the at the federal level. We didn't get all hundred first, and we got fifty million in the first year. And in the implementation of that program, there's a theme to this story. The Pentagon decided that they really didn't want to fund hard infrastructure. They really wanted to fund things that were, uh, human infrastructure focused. So things like making sure that there was childcare support and. Uh, emergency services and healthcare access, and these are all critically important projects as well. But they were funded at the, uh. At the cost of infrastructure, traditional infrastructure, getting people to and from the facility. So our challenge over the past three years has been twofold. It's been number one, to plus up the program from fifty million dollars to its authorized level of a hundred. And we've made really good progress on that. We're at ninety right now. So we're almost at the fully authorized amount. And then number two is to actually prioritize infrastructure as a as an eligible outcome from this project. And again, we're making progress, but we have, we've got a ways to go still on this. Luckily, we've got a huge advocate in Congress, uh, who's Derek Kilmer, who's your your representative, basically Tacoma and on the peninsula. And Derek Kilmer is on the Appropriations Committee and is also on the Defense Appropriations Committee. So we've got Strickland and Smith on the authorization side and Kilmer on the, uh, on the spending side. And they are collaborating and coordinating to try to try to move Pentagon thinking on this. We'll make slow incremental progress on this, but we're really hopeful that DESEP is a tool that the city can use to solve some of these projects in the future. Which is the segue into the medium sized city set aside. Like we alluded to earlier, there is so much federal investment out there right now. It's it's, the opportunity is astounding. For the city to really bring federal funding in to meet its community and infrastructure goals. The problem is that many of these programs preclude the city from qualifying into them on a competitive basis. Either because we're just plusing up the budgets into existing grant programs. Or we're setting up new grant programs by looking at the models of what's already on the books. And so we are trying not only to get a medium sized city set aside into the Raze Grant Program. Which has been traditionally our focused goal on this. But to take a broader look to say that for federal grant programs where cities are the primary. Uh, applicant in these programs. That there needs to be a tier of funding in these programs set aside for cities between ten and seventy five thousand in population size. And again, I. It's funny, I really want to focus on the progress we've made in this because, uh, we we have made substantial progress. But there's so much work to do. And that all of the climate, um, programs that were just set up in the in the climate bill that passed in August. Those regs have not been written yet. So we can't evaluate necessarily kind of the development of those today. You know, are they going to be viable funding sources for the city of Lakewood moving forward? So we're going to be offering comments in the development of those programs. We're going to be participating in that to try to bend that. And our delegation gets this. And especially if Larson becomes the chair of the Transportation Committee and Patty's the chair of the, Senator Murray's the chair of the Appropriations Committee. We have an opportunity where people understand this dynamic, understand this this value system, support our point of view in it. I think we have the opportunity to continue to make some. Improvements here. And the city's not alone. The city has been one of about four or five coordinating cities that has really tried to. Mobilize. Communities of a similar size on on this front. You've been the lead entity in Pierce and Thurston Counties to mobilize other communities around this. And there were thirty three cities that that worked together on kind of an informal ad hoc basis. Uh, to to lead this effort as part of the infrastructure bill. So. We'll continue our work in that regard. I think it's important to mention.
One one question on that. So the medium sized set aside is currently defined between ten and what, seventy five thousand?
Yes.
As you know, with the Growth Management Act, we are. Told to plan for growth and Lakewood at sixty three is now told to plan to be eighty six thousand. I would hate to see us grow out of. The opportunity to participate in a medium sized city set aside because of the direction to plan and actually achieve. Growth without the infrastructure dollars to accommodate the growth. So it's just something to think about because we don't want to have it static as cities like us are actually growing as directed under the Growth Management Act. Mr. Anderson?
Be careful what you ask for. If you look at the array of city populations, there are three hundred cities, some of that rate of a hundred thousand of armed war in the country. But there is a. Once you hit fifty thousand and go, it's there's this, there's this large bump. Uh, so I I think if we raise it.
Right, then we.
We create much greater competition.
Right.
As you can imagine. Every city falls somewhere on this continuum and those those. Those segmented. Demarcations, uh, are the product of negotiations. Uh, I will say that, um, the broader effort is looking at. Uh, four, four tiers in every federal grant program.
Okay.
And so just to really define what they are.
Yeah.
One is ten to seventy five. One is seventy five to two hundred. One is two hundred plus. And one is under ten thousand. So they're all set aside, which is currently in there now.
That makes some sense, and so we would still not be aced out of a tier.
No, but you'd be competing with the federal ways and the Kirklands.
Well, we'll worry about that after our first acquisition of funds under this program that we fought so hard to get.
There are other things on the agenda that are kind of policy statements that are continuation of where the city's been for a couple of years. Again, they're not necessarily our, they're not the the topics that we lead with when we go into the room, but we'll certainly take action on, uh, when and if Congress does. Uh, and with that, I'll kind of respect your time and take your questions.
Any questions? Sure, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the visiting with us this morning. I'm just curious, is there any talk about base closures?
Oh, great question. I I I don't, I want to take your question very seriously, but I want to answer it in a very flip way. It's kind of like talking about Sasquatch. Uh, people talk about it a lot, but nobody's ever seen it. And. Yeah, base closure is something that we continue to support as a community, uh, the BRAC process for for to to use the acronym. Chairman Smith of the Armed Services Committee supports a BRAC round. I think there is, uh, the Army supports a BRAC round, the Air Force, I mean, the the Pentagon supports a BRAC round. But right now, there is not the political will in either chamber to to move forward with a BRAC round. So it's one of those things that we continue to lend our voice to the effort for. We are not worried about the competitiveness of bases in the state of Washington. But that is not a nationally shared point of view.
I would note that one of the infrastructure things funded through DESEP. Is something that relates. is something that relates to a, a location that should be bracked. And there is a training area in Alaska that doesn't have electricity. And they're putting, one of the larger problem projects funded by DESEP under an environmental guise is they're taking out the diesel generators and they're putting in high, high power transmission lines out in the middle of nowhere, Alaska, or a seldom-used training area or an infantry division or a brigade that probably shouldn't be in Alaska. So, uh, Pentagon, uh, is following the political lead and and, uh, plusing up things that, that it may not use if there was a brack.
Yeah, and Deputy Mayor, maybe to add a little bit more to my comments. It, everybody who follows, you know, the, this process and, and, you know, whether it's defense media, whether it's defense communities, whether it's leadership in, in Congress kind of on this issue, whether it's the Pentagon themselves. There is a growing consensus that a BRAC ground is inevitable and, and, and necessary. Not just that it's inevitable, but, but it's the only way we can keep, keep a handle on uh, just the upkeep costs, you know, of, of so many of these facilities and installations. But we haven't, there's, there's some imaginary access point, right? Where, you know, the need to do this and the political will to do this, right now, there's still a delta between those two. So I think that, that's slowly closing, but I, I don't think we're going to do a BRAC round next year.
Any other questions? Thank you for all of your good work over the many years and for coming to visit today and reviewing our priorities with us.
Well, maybe just in closing, it's a, it's a privilege to get to work with you all in the city of Lakewood. I cannot tell you. The projects you put forward are generally unanimously supported by council. They're endorsed by numerous members of your community. You've got a phenomenal staff that handles the data requirements and the communication requirements to pull them off. And you, you make our jobs really, really easy. And, but it's, it's not just that. It's a growing community with real challenges that you're taking on. I really appreciate the chance to partner with you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it. It's a big team effort, as we all know, and it starts with the planting of good policy seeds and execution to fruition. So thanks. Yeah, very much appreciate it. All right, just make sure we're the top city on your list of clients. We just want to be number one in your heart and in your mind, Jake.
Did I, was I sworn in?
I just want to say that it's a privilege working with our legislators and you as well because together we make things happen. So thank you.
And I, I'd like to compliment you on probably being one of the, if not the best setup man, one of the best setup men that I've ever had a chance to work with. I have to do, if you're going to go talk to somebody and say, Jake, what am I supposed to say? And then hit me at appropriate time and, uh, he, uh, he, uh, has his homework done. He focuses things well and we've, I've been well-served by your services. So thanks.
Thank you, sir.
We, we hit for maximum impact, right?
Max.
All right, very good. Mr. Vargas, what's next on our agenda today? It's, I think you're the last but not least on county priorities, correct?
That is correct. Um, so yeah, I'll go over our Pierce County, uh, policy manual. It's pretty short and sweet. That is on page fifty-six, uh, beer packet. So much like the state policy manual, uh, we start off with the Indigenous People and Lands Acknowledgement as well as a statement on equity by the City Council. Moving on to page fifty-eight, much like the state policy manual as well, we have the City Council Goals Legend, uh, in which all of the policy item names are color-coded to correspond with one of the six City Council Goals. So to get into it, page fifty-nine, I'm starting off with community and economic development. Um, and I'll, I'll go over the substantive changes. Um, as for these first three items related to regional planning overall, uh, the Puget Sound Regional Council and Metropolitan Planning Organization items, those remain unchanged from last year. Moving on to annexations. Um, we did have some change in the Camp Murray item. The language here corresponds with the same item in the state policy manual. So there is alignment there. Um, and there have been no, has been no action to say in the Arrowhead Partridge Glen item as well as Joint Louis, Joint Base Lewis McCord item. As for the Lakewood Population allocations item, there has been some slight updates to the numbers and some language workshopping. Uh, but overall, the city's, um, policy remains unchanged. Uh, policy direction must be developed for inclusion, GMA and other appropriate documents, um, that allow, you know, the city to, to meet its, um, target population needs without, outside our ability to govern. So that remains unchanged primarily. But however, on the libraries item, there has been considerable movement this year. Um, and this new language reflects that. So over the past year, the city has been working with the Pierce County Library Systems to study how to best improve the city's libraries. City Council has part, City Council has partnered with the Pierce County Library System to convene a library advisory committee. That includes Lakewood residents to provide input on this project. And this advisory committee is currently evaluating different options, including whether to remodel the existing libraries or build new ones with a specific focus on the main downtown library and the Telacom Neighborhood Library. Uh, so the city favors incorporating a new senior center with any library upgrades. And also, the city supports, um, its partnership with Pierce County Library Systems to improve our libraries here in Lakewood. So.
Yes, thank you. You know, on the, the write-up about libraries that's here. No one who reads that would glean that we're without a library at the moment. It's language of a number of years ago about let's, let's improve the libraries. But our situation is more dire. And I, I think that our communique in terms of a policy manual to the County Council should, should reflect that we've reached the, just where we're going. We've reached an unacceptable situation in terms of, and the, the goals of this, incorporating the senior center and and that, that's still there, but the urgency is perhaps need to be reflected a bit more so.
I, I had a point I just wanted to bring up. Thank you, Mr. Branson, on that. I'm sure there'll be perhaps another comment on, on the library thing. With regard to the, um, community and economic development category, you know, there was a comment during the last council meeting about the infrastructure needs to really better support the missing middle work we're trying to do on housing, specifically with regard to accessory dwelling units on existing residential lots. I'm not sure exactly how to articulate what we want, but I think what we want is coordination and facilitation with the county to move the needle, so to speak, in a positive direction by either reducing the facility charge or the capacity charge or, or the connection fee to accommodate the growth and development of accessory dwelling units to accommodate the missing middle goal. You got a comment on that, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would have a doubt on my list of things to propose. I think it's just flat-out advocate for, uh, a, uh, waiving of capacity and connection fees for ADUs and existing development. So, uh, that, that was called West Lakewood, most of the area of the city, I believe. That's approximately seven thousand dollars for a REU, residential equivalent unit. So it's a seven thousand dollar incentive to developer owner to put in an ADU. I think it's meaningful. And we should advocate that at both the County Council and shape, uh, level.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, we can add an item pertaining to those. So, yeah, a good addition here.
Mr. Coffield had a comment there.
Given it relates to sewers, um, perhaps the best place to put that would be under the sewer utility language and we can incorporate it in there.
Is that under economic development, community economic development area or is there a different infrastructure piece?
It's under transportation and infrastructure.
I do think it's an economic development piece, but yeah, I get it. Infrastructure certainly is where it would fit as well.
Mr. Mayor.
I really want to focus on the housing piece of it, though, the facilitation of housing and community economic development. Yes.
I agree with you. I think it's, it's a much stronger statement and, and talking point if we have it called out very separately. It can also be included in transportation and infrastructure, but we're trying to make a point.
All right. So that concludes the, um, economic and community development section. Moving on to community health and resilience. Um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds item here, um, slight change to the, um, the, um, when the final commitment happened on part of the city. However, we do have a new addition, um, below that the city is supportive of Pierce County Sewer and Water Utility Infrastructure Partnership Program to perhaps speaks to, um, this discussion here. Wish the city has submitted the following sewer extension projects, um, such as Grant Avenue and Orchard Street, Wadsworth Street, Silcox Drive and Boat Road, Rose Road and Forest Road and Boat Street Sewer Extension for Habitat for Humanity.
Seeks the waiver of capacity charges and facility hookups in order to facilitate.
Yeah, yeah, definitely a good addition here as well.
Yeah, the community and economic development goals for missing middle housing, including development of ADUs as noted above or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, tied in.
No problem there. Moving on to the next item, we have.
Mr. Branson has got a point.
Yeah, and I think that one way to address that is that we're, we're looking for them to sort of adjust their fee structure of, of when we're, we're adding something on a, on a parcel that already has sewer service, but we're just adding something to create density. So, so it's not for new development or subdivisions that we're not asking for a major change in the, in the, in the rate structure. But we're saying if you've got a parcel that already has sewer service and has paid these fees one time at some point in time, either through the LID or something, if they're looking to just to add and in further of a goals of equity and inclusion and density and affordable housing uh, in, 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 on, on a, a parcel that's already being served, that's where we want some relief.
Absolutely. That's throw in the equity and inclusion piece in there is probably even, gives it more oomph.
Yeah, that's a good addition. So the next item, um, the Flood Control Zone District, there hasn't been any movement in this area. So that language remains the same. Now, moving on to the public safety section, we have the geographic equity and discharge from state facilities. Uh, this item mirrors the same, um, item in the state policy manual. So we'll make the appropriate changes here as well. Um, and the next following items also mirror, um, the items in the state policy manual, um, such as protecting residents of adult family home businesses remain unchanged, as well as state hospital reentry program and enhanced services facilities items. Um, although there has been some changes to the following items, the video arraignment and booking restrictions. Just slight updates, you know, where we're currently at with the pandemic in Pierce County jails, um, restrictions as it relates to those. Uh, primarily for video arraignment, the county does not provide video arraignment in Pierce County Jail. Video arrangements allow the city to safely and effectively provide public defense services to jail populations, such as decreasing the number of jail transports, which are expensive and potentially hazardous. The city requests that the county find solutions to this issue. For booking restrictions, um, essentially detention has been discontinued still for some arrests, including certain property crimes. However, these crimes still impact the city's public safety. So the city requests the county implement solutions to continue pre-pandemic detention policies, such as acquiring additional staff and detention space to augment jail capacity. Finally, we conclude with the Pierce County Prosecuting Attorney's Office item, um, which, well, the city still supports consistent, transparent and timely felony charging and filing from the prosecuting attorney's office and regular communication regarding Lakewood cases reviewed by the attorney's office. And that concludes public safety. Moving on to the transportation and.
Anderson has a question or a point?
One area where we might have some success if we put a little effort into it is the video arraignment. There was actually money appropriated that for the, uh, county level for that. The project got reprioritized, pushed down the road, uh, COVID. There's, it looks like there's money back again. So, uh, for reasons, it would take a long time to explain. There was internal resistance from the jail. Basically, union issues or people finding, share finding excuses for it being too hard. But it's actually easier for everybody. And so they're going to spend a bunch of money if it doesn't fall out again uh, to create the capacity to have video arraignment. Uh, and so if, if we could get some other municipalities that and a common voice there, I, I think it will stay in and actually help.
Ms. Farm?
On the geographic equity and discharge from state facilities, there, there is actually, there could be more connection between what was in, what we talked about earlier versus here. This, this reminds me of last year's, uh, county thing. And I know that our, that our state, our state policy manual has changed considerably. So I'd love to see a lot of that pulled in here. And also if there's anything specifically we can ask the county to do, I mean, I see a lot of generalities. We request additional support. We, we request this. How can we put that into action? Or, obviously, we haven't seen some of these reports come out, but I'm, but I would love to see some hints at, at what we might actually go to the county and ask them to do. How do we turn this into action? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first item for transportation.
Mr. Branson has another one, point?
Well, I think in terms of, you know, what do we want to ask the county specifically to do? And, and I look at the, at the the table of contents of this particular policy statement. Two things that are underway that require county participation to do that have to do with the Chambers Creek Canyon project and one, and, and while they are engaged with that, we want them to continue to be engaged uh, and, and to both to move that along existing timelines for completion or uh, further on to look to be, to be able to go and do that. Similarly, they're work jointly with us to elevate the Sealy Lake Park area so that it becomes a, a more usable piece of open space. You know, and they, they have been working on that, but we want them to look to continue that. And, and combined with that, we may want to urge the county to rehabilitate the community center. Or tear it down. But it's, you know, the, the issue is, is that they're, they're, the county is, uh, the proprietor of a building that is, that is in decline. And we have seen the impact of buildings in decline, um, going off over there. It, you know, it's, it's declined to the point of where we can no longer hold senior center activities there. activities there to be able to go and do that. And we don't necessarily have a a a parks recreation, open space section in this policy document, but there are things we want I think the county to do that 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 we that we could narrate and say, and that would actually be things that I think at least are a local county council person should be interested in and advocating for, and we we should ask for that. So so those would be, that would be an expanded area in that that we might add in within this policy document because we do want the county to do do some things in terms of the open space and recreation parks realm.
Mr. Anderson. With respect to the community center, there is a percolating closure isolation for the fences grant request to totally redo that out of federal funds. So this might be a good opportunity to contact our county council person to support such a grant request.
Sounds like we can add that in under the right. I don't know if it's transportation infrastructure or if it's community economic development again, or yeah, I would think it would go up there probably. Sure.
Yeah.
You got the theme anyway.
I don't I don't know what this, I don't know what the status is right now, but I just passed by. It was big numbers.
Because we're not in it right now, right, for the senior center? Right, okay. Did you want to bring that up there, cemetery?
Yeah, the the other one, I I talked to the city manager about this, the old settle summer cemetery on Washington. You know, one of the fears in that regard is that the water company is going to find bodies because it's part of the payments over of the original cemetery. But it is, I, best I can tell, owned by the county. It was, there was a grant. Narrative, I haven't seen documents. Narrative says that there was a grant in eighteen fifty-five to the county much, you know, three years prior to statehood of that for the original settlers and their descendants. It doesn't look good. We're going to do a lot of improvements to Washington. We could do a lot better minimal maintenance of that, maybe put a fence around it. It's a little more decorative. Mow it a little more often. Use it for community service projects, maybe grave concerns would move at some point, move its efforts from when it completes the Western State project and move on. So I think the city is kind of, in some ways, like the historic site at Western State Hospital. It's a historic site. The city would be a better steward of than another agency, so we might want to explore.
Putting that on our list.
General there. The other county thing, which we'll probably discuss in another context, and I know it's relatively new for probably everybody but me, is the commer- community first village. We had discussed using some of our ARPA funding for veterans housing. And there's going to be a veterans element of community first village. And so for a later discussion, it may be inclusion in this. It wouldn't be so much inclusion in this as as a an element of our ARPA discussions, being a contributor and being acknowledged with respect to contributing to that. That project is at the end of one hundred and seventy-sixth. Sandwiched on the northwest northeast corner of the base property line. Ironically, it's actually in the twenty-eighth district, although you have to go to the twenty-ninth to get to it.
That might go well into the community health and resilience thing where the the city is supportive of Pierce County's efforts to create a community first village within the county. That would be of service to residents, including Lakewood's veterans or something to that effect.
And, you know, try to trying to cite that within the parameters of the Gross Management Act and county zoning by the feet.
Sure. Put it next to the county's new airport, perhaps.
In the in a nuclear zone.
Yeah, exactly. Might ultimately get sewer utility out there if you have an airport. Ms. Farmer.
Would it be appropriate to also add a mention of our shape work? Because of it's regional, it's county based, and we have it in the state perspective, but really, yeah.
So infrastructure needs such as Sealy Lake and the county facility in which we used to have our senior center. Some sort of supportive statement for community first village. Acquisition of the veteran, the small cemetery, settler cemetery. I think that was what I heard for transfer of ownership. Any other pieces? You got all of those, Mr. Vargas? Yep, because I know the park piece was.
As well.
Yep.
Yeah.
There was a variety of potential, well, not just potential requested updates there. Mr. Bransister.
Yeah, I I I think, you know, and well, today we're dealing with the policy manual, so historically, we've been really successful with our state legislative delegations, and it's been well received of where at some point in time, in their case, after their sessions, where we've called them in to thank them and have and asked them to tell us how well they've sort of executed the things that were on our priorities to be able to do that. And we've never really done that as deliberately, just with, you know, you know, our 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 county consul representative, but I think that we, you know, perhaps would want to do that, and after we adopt this, perhaps invite her to to come where we can sort of go over this, or whatever the priorities on this are briefly with her going ahead as a consul, as opposed to what I'm sure our our staff have done that with her staff and her things. But we we could make a more impactful presentation if we as a group interacted with her at a at a at a study session or something to briefly put this forward to her rather than just drop a piece of paper on it.
Agreed.
Or some digital ions or something.
Yeah, stole my thunder. I was I was actually going to suggest that as well. Perfect.
But digital ions?
No, definitely not. But a a stronger visible connection to the to our district representative. Yep.
Yeah, so for transportation and infrastructure, there has been considerable movement in the Pierce County Transportation Coordinating Committee item. We have a whole set of new language here. The city is appreciative that the Pierce County Regional Council, PCRC, increased the transparency of the Transportation Coordination Committee, TCC, particularly in regards to how TCC scores and determines funding recommendations. TCC has made project scorecards available to all member jurisdictions at the end of the scoring process when presented to TCC by subcommittee. The city is also appreciative of PCRC forming a subcommittee to work with TCC on holistically examining the scoring in ranking process. The city further recommends that PCRC solicit feedback from member jurisdictions on TCC's existing project selection process. So a lot of good movement on that item.
Yeah, and it took a lot of work to get the movement, let me just say on that. So, but thank you for following up.
Yeah. So, next item, Pierce County Sewer Utility. Based on our conversations here, this may also be updated. But as of right now, it is unchanged, so I'll go ahead and revisit that. As for future commercial airfields, JBLM, this policy item reflects the same policy item in the state policy manuals. So any changes there, I'll I'll go ahead and make those here as well.
Very good.
And as for military affairs, we have the North Clear Zone item, which, you know, we have been making good progress. However, the city's overall policy stance remains unchanged. City is working with the county to return the North Clear Zone to an uninhabited state. So the language here remains unchanged.
We might want to advocate for additional county appropriations to contribute to at the acquisition of Clear Zone. County's money was just all spent with the biennium.
They put some money up the last time, didn't they?
Yeah, we we just put, I think, half million dollars toward half million dollars went toward purchase of the, you know, Tactical Taylor property and just spent last hundred and fifty of this biennium's money on a couple of additional commercial storage units.
Yeah, that would probably be a good addition. Mr. Coffield, just close the hoop on the whole Tactical Taylor thing. Are they physically out? And then does that building then come down?
No, so the city closed on the acquisition of that building in January. So we now own it, and then as a part of that, we've done a leaseback with Tactical Taylor for the up to the next five years. While they look for a location, they have reduced the size of the footprint in the building just based on their business activity, as well as their close working partnership with Arrow Precision. So some of their activity has transitioned over there. But right now, they're in the process of looking for a location to to move to. Then, once they do move out of that, then the city will demolish, will move forward with demolishing the building.
Got it. And do we have funds that we've kept aside for the demolition piece?
Long story short, we we don't have any identified fundings, however, it would come from the continued funding of the North Clear Zone account through both the federal, state and local monies.
Got it.
And we're collecting rent, that's correct.
That's to pay for a portion of the.
The acquisition itself.
Yeah.
That's correctly. So, yeah, I'll go ahead and make that addition. Finally, we close out under general government innovative service solutions, which slight language change to show that the city is appreciative of recent innovative service collaborations with Pierce County, such as adopting the PALS plus online permitting system and traffic signal contracting.
Very good. That concludes that part of it. Any questions or additional additions to the countywide policy manual? Mr. Bransister and Ms. Farmer.
Well, Neil, I I think that I would really like the county to come up with a process regarding the revenue that's coming from the new mental health sales tax is to develop a basis to share some of that funding with the municipalities outside of Tacoma to to be able to go and do that. A more formula- formulative basis to do that to where some of those funds can be utilized locally. I recognize that most of them should be invested in regional solutions. But, you know, I I think that the the municipalities from Lakewood to South Prairie would could benefit by having some discretionary revenue from that revenue stream. We have in particular, we we've talked about American Rescue Plan Act funds about how we'd like them to 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 be the steward of them and 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 see that they get used widely. I think that's another funding source that we'd certainly like them to work towards coming up with a way to where every use of them has to be decided or agreed to by the county, as opposed to there being some discretionary distribution to municipalities.
Certainly, I would hope that they would use, I agree, I would hope that they would use some of those funds for the services to be provided down the road at the Community First Village. I know that's part of the concept, right?
They've, the first round of county funding funded every applicant for that. The the funding is ahead of the services right now. They funded everything and there's extra money being collected above the original revenue estimate or the current cycle. Then there's a committee that is established, and I don't know to what extent Lakewood participates in that committee. There's a committee that's established to make recommendations. Then it goes to to human services and the county council at this point. And I I know we had a discussion on it when we initially decided that if the county was going to go through with passing the tax, we would we would go along because of the the operational infrastructure costs. So I'd be careful about what we again, what we ask for as far as creating an overhead structure. If it's a carve out that we get to vote on who we contract with with the parameters of that. That would probably, in my opinion, be good because a lot of this is very loose right now because behavioral self health services are in shorter supply than the money to fund them right now. So how we how we do it might be.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking that a model that is similar to the flood control zone district of where ninety percent of those dollars are spent by the district and people apply and it's like you done to project. But that the there's an opportunity fund that is established for municipalities and the balance in that fund for each municipality builds up, okay? If you don't spend it, you don't have to spend it every year, and you you aren't dependent upon the 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 ask going forward. And while Lakewood certainly benefits from that, some of the smaller municipalities in the county would benefit from a model like that of where some funds could build up to where they have amount of dollars where they could actually do something impactful based on whatever formula went into to going to that. You know, and it could be that you put five percent of what's collected into the opportunity fund, and then that's divided up amongst the the this, you know, to create to create some local discretion. That that that's one way to sort of look at it. But I I think that and there and there and there would be other ways, but there ought to be some systemic way to provide some local discretion to spend some of those funds locally.
Mr. Anderson.
I have an additional one to look out for on the horizon. That's the opioid settlement. It's not a huge amount of money. It's probably, my guess, it's going to be sixty-five thousand dollars a year to Lakewood for seventeen years. Something in that range and about ten times that to the county. The way I have read the settlement and it was explained to me by outside counsel is that there has to be a countywide, in the case of Pierce County, administrative organization. But that the money comes to participating litigants in cities over twenty-five thousand. Participating litigants in cities over 25,000 directly, it may pass through the county treasury, but we would get the money. There is at least some indication of a. What I would call a misunderstanding on the part of one or more county council members that they have, may have the ability to allocate the entire county's. Appropriation. So it's just something to watch out for, and we should be a, an early participant in how the countywide. Administrative, I forget there's a name for it in the settlement agreement, administrative organization is formulated. So that we have an, an active voice, it's, it's basically. We'll call it an, an auditing entity so that they make sure that money isn't being spent for things that aren't authorized by the settlement agreement. Settlement agreement was. Crafted in a way that. Limited the state and municipalities' use of the funds to things that are. Very broadly related to opioid problems, but can't be used like the cigarette. Tobacco settlements were misused.
So maybe we need just kind of a generic line under community health and resilience. Under American Rescue Plan Act funds, it says something to affect behavioral health. And opioid settlement funds and something about. Coordination and facilitation.
Coordination or, or we have, we want to have.
Allocation with the city of Lakewood for the benefit of Lakewood residents.
Yeah, or, yeah, or we want essentially local control over.
Yeah.
A proportion share.
I like Mr. Brans' thought though about, you know, our residents are paying in on the one tenth, one percent for behavioral health funding. And it would be nice to, not only, certainly we're regional supporters, but it would be nice to have some set aside of the monies that flow from Lakewood residents. Back to Lakewood residents for needs here locally, if that's possible. What do you think, Mr. Coffield, shaking your head kind of? Wonder what other communities are doing with that, I know that, uh, Koma has their own, obviously, and then the county has.
They're the only one that has their own.
Okay, and we deferred to the county for that reason, so that we would have more regional solutions.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Ferman?
I want to echo my support for adding the mental health and the opioid, and I don't. Forming some thoughts on our climate action work, our tree work, and as it relates to economic development. I'm wondering if it makes sense to add something regionally about our, about our interest in, in. In where EVs are cited in the work that we've seen in the solid waste plan that might involve at some point, you know. Composting and things that we might have to do, so I'm, I'm curious if there's, if there's something along the lines of environment, climate, trees. I don't know, but just thinking, thinking through suggestion.
I'm trying to think aloud where the county, what the county's role would be in that, we would advocate for. More regional coordination maybe, or what?
It just reminded me of some of that conversation at PCRC. It relates, uh, some of the conversations that we had had here.
Mr. Brans, Senator?
Yeah, well, well, certainly, you know, we've got efforts related to Clover Creek.
Right.
But, but the county, we need to work in consort with the county because. You know, our section of Clover Creek is one section, but the, but, but, but what happens in Parkland and, and, and others. You know, in, influences the solutions that, that, that we can make regarding, you know, you know, flood control, you know, some, some. Creation of some flood mitigation measures to enhance wetlands on the upper reaches of the creek. Reduce the likelihood of floods here and things like that. So that, you know, I, I think we want to work together with them, I, I think. That's a one climate related thing that we could mention in here.
Our, our plan, our policy manual ranges from more specific asks to general, gosh, thanks, you know, we support innovative service solutions. And, and thanks for putting PALS in place, and so. I think it seems that it, it might be okay for us to do a general, general statement, commitment, intent, policy area. This is something we're interested in, it's obviously, it's great to have more specific things that we'd like to talk to them about, you know, what. What are actual solutions or what, where there might be funds or, or infrastructure that we can set up. But in some cases, maybe it's good to start stating intentions.
Does that help with regard to some clarity, good?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order on the county legislative policy manual? Any else for the good of the order, Mr. Coffield? Any questions of members of council? Well, if not, thank you for your time and attention, and we're adjourned.